Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I will declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency muster point during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the Warrnambool people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock local government area. For the council prayer tonight, do we have Pastor Aaron Donahue here to lead us in prayer? Please come forward. Councillors, please stand.
Thank you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, by your grace and mercy, we pray for our council here in the city of Cessnock. We pray for the members and officers and their families who serve unswainly and diligently, Lord, to govern and look after this great community of ours. Direct their work and influence their decisions, Lord. Grant them your grace for wisdom, to apply mercy where needed and to apply consequence where needed, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for safety and the welfare of this city and we also thank you, Lord, for peace and happiness and truth and justice, which is what you stand for in all these things. We thank you, Lord, for the development going forward of this city, the prosperity of this city and may you be established among us. And we ask these things through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Donahue. There are no apologies for tonight. Are there any requests for leave of absence? No. Disclosures, sorry, confirmation of minutes of the previous meeting. Moving that way, councillor Burke seconded councillor Sander. No debate. All those in favour unanimous? Disclosures of interest? Any disclosures of interest? Councillor Burke?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have a disclosure in PE five, the Comprehensive LEP DCP Review. Non-procuring interest lessons significant for the reason that I have and will into the future be part of events in the Cessnock Local Government area. I choose to remain in the chamber as it will not have any influence on the decision how I vote tonight.
Okay. No other disclosures of interest? Petitions? Councillor Dunn?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have a petition from a Mr Greg Kitson and he is writing, representing the occupants of twenty-one properties on Jacaranda Grove and Camilla Close Elrington on matters of significant concern to the residents with regard to road maintenance.
Tabling the position. Thank you, councillor Dunn. Public address. Speaking tonight on report PE four twenty twenty-three, I would first like to call up Jim Hunter from Capital Corporation. Thank you, Jim. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jim Hunter and I'm the director of Capital Corporation, representing Capital Corporation here tonight and speaking in favour of our planning proposal, the Love Dale Integrated Tourist Development. Just briefly about our business, we've been around for thirty-two years, Australian owned company, where we've successfully delivered over five thousand homes and relocated three hundred and fifty businesses across New South Wales and Queensland. And I'd just like to thank council for the opportunity here to speak tonight and also working with council staff for their efforts with our planning proposal to this point. Regarding the Love Dale Integrated Tourist Development Resort, we've had a long term commitment to the site dating all the way back to two thousand and eight, having since gained rezoning in two thousand and nineteen for a stage integrated tourist development, which is still active on the site today. Over the last number of years, we've presented the concept to council staff on several occasions, taking on board feedback at each integral stage to ensure we get the best outcome for the development. Our ambition for the project is to create a luxury golf resort and a premium residential golf community and the vision for the site has evolved with the support of a design excellence competition that we partake in two thousand and twenty. We had four of the top leading architect firms around the country produce us with their best ideas. They come back with a truly best-in-class destination resort for the Hunter Valley. We've also engaged in local and international research and focus groups and we've also taken on feedback from some of the world's leading hotel groups for the site. At the heart of the development is the Love Dale Golf Course, of course. It's been designed by Darius Oliver. Darius, who you may not know by name, but he currently has the number one golf course in the country and he believes we've got the same potential here at Love Dale. The design of the course is understated with rustic and authentic and is authentically Australian. We're working with the natural contours of the site and retaining as much of the existing vegetation as possible, which we think is fantastic. Darius believes we can have a top five New South Wales golf course on completion, which would be a real asset here for the Cessnock community. The authentic local character of the golf course will run through other elements of the site, including the residential sections, the resort facilities and also the community assets. We're not looking for any franchise tourism here. The tourism assets produced on the site will bring on significant investment, both from ourselves and international groups, and will be a major source of new jobs to the Vineyard District. Some of the key economic benefits include twelve hundred and fifty direct and indirect jobs, which was nine hundred more than the existing approval, over five hundred and fifty million dollars worth of construction value and upon completion will have over a hundred million dollars per annum in GDP contributions and forty-three million dollars per annum of investment, tourism investment. The planning proposal seeks to increase the number of residential dwellings to support the increase in tourism investment. The planning proposal also requests that two hundred houses are delivered in concurrent with a signature golf course from Darius Oliver, which we plan to commence in two thousand and twenty-four. The balance of the project will be delivered in accordance with the council-controlled staging plan. We request council support here tonight of an endorsement of our planning proposal and we look forward to working with you and the community to bring something truly special to the area. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr Hunter? Councillor Olson?
Just on your accommodation, is it the houses that you'll be building will be all permanent residents or will they be accommodation for holidaymakers?
So there's a mix of uses on the site. We'll have a component of permanent residential occupancy and then over three hundred tourist-based dwellings, predominantly made up of villa-based products, short-term stays that we'll have for tourism purposes.
Right, thank you.
Any further questions? No further questions. Please thank Mr Hunter for his presentation.
Thank you, everybody.
Next up speaking on report PE for twenty twenty-three is Stephen Leathley on behalf of the Vintage and Stephens Group. Thank you, Stephen. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillors, so I'm speaking on behalf of the Vintage, the Stephens Group, Hunter Valley Wine Tourism Association, residents of the Vintage. We're actually very excited to have a Darius Oliver golf course being constructed across the road. He is one of the leading golf course designers and the golf course is built down on King Island, Cape Wickham. I've played it three times. It is a fantastic facility. So if we've got something like that here in the Hunter, that will be a great asset, a great tourism asset for this area and everyone is excited about it. What our main interest is, and whilst I'm speaking against it, there were some issues we had with the drafting of the planning proposal and the wording of that. And I believe that John Stephens sent an email out with a letter last Friday that outlined those issues. I basically drafted that letter. I've been in discussions with some with council offices today and I understand there's an alternative recommendation to you now, which we are happy with. We just want to, or the community, the Hunter Valley Wine Tourism Association and the Vintage just want to see the development built as an integrated tourist development. The golf course clubhouse has to be built up front, then it costs a lot of money to build the golf course. It'll cost them probably circa forty million dollars or so. So they'll need to get that residential development occurring at the same time. We understand that. The Stephens Group are developers. They understand that's what needs to happen as well. We just want to make sure that there isn't residential development out there without a golf course and clubhouse being operational. And then as further residential development occurs, there's more tourism infrastructure. It doesn't necessarily have to be holiday accommodation or hotel accommodation, as long as it's restaurants, art galleries, other things that are there for tourists, as long as it's in that vein. There's an existing staged consent already in place that covers this development. This is providing for a further three hundred residential keys out there, which we, again, we support that because that's actually going to make this development sustainable into the future. So the more people that are actually living on this site, the more sustainable this development's going to be because there'll be more members playing there. So I guess in conclusion, that's all I've got to say. As long as the golf course and the clubhouse, which is key components, are built up front and operating when the first mum and dad move in there, we're happy.
Thank you. Any questions, councillor Dunn?
Yeah, thank you for speaking with us today, Stephen. Stephen, the submission from the Stephens Group was quite substantial. Is there any reason why that didn't come in when the DA was out on exhibition?
Yeah, the planning proposal was on exhibition leading up to Christmas last year and I just think it slipped under everyone's radar. I certainly was not aware of it and it wasn't really come to our attention until the matter went on the council agenda last week. What we would like to encourage the proponent to do, which they haven't really been doing to date, is to actually more actively engage with the community out there and the Stephens Group and the Vintage in what they're doing. I know they've done a presentation to council. I really would encourage them to come and do that same presentation to the Hunter Valley Wine Tourism Association and to the Vintage community because everyone is very interested in what's happening and wants to know what's going on. So and that will just take away any angst and issues that there might be. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions? Please, Mr Leathley.
Thank you.
Councillors, we'll now move to deal with report PE four twenty twenty-three. Councillor Dunn has an alternate recommendation that is displayed on the screen.
Yes, thank you, Mr Vale. The council endorsed the planning proposal in relation to lots two to four DP eight six nine six five one, lot eleven DP eleven eight seven six six three and lot one DP one two double three oh three oh as an amendment to clause seven point double one of Cessnock Local Environment Plan two thousand and eleven as follows. One, the clause applies to land at Wine Country Drive at Colvin being lots two to four DP eight six nine six five one, lots eleven DP one one eight seven double six three and lot one DP one two double three oh three oh. Point two, development consent must not be granted to any development on land to which this clause applies unless the consent authority is satisfied that the development is integrated tourist development and the total number of permanent residential dwellings on that land does not exceed six hundred and forty and the total number of tourist and visitor accommodation units on that land does not exceed three hundred. Point three, registration of the plan of subdivision for the first two hundred residential lots shall not occur until compliance certificate under section six point four E four of the Environmental Planning and Assessment Act nineteen seventy-nine has been issued for the golf course and clubhouse, confirming that it is completed in accordance with the conceptual, with the concept approval and relevant development consent. In this clause, integrated tourist development means a development that contains a mix of both permanent residential dwellings and one or more of the following uses: tourist and visitor accommodation, tourist-oriented land uses such as outdoor recreation facilities, for example golf courses, food and drink premises, function centres, any development that is ordinary, incidental or ancillary to such uses.
Second, councillor Burke?
Yeah, we'd just quickly like to speak to that, Mr Vale. Basically, this is an advanced and integrated tourism development and council's biggest concern was around the residential side of this development going through without significant tourist development matching that before it's actually opened up to sale for the lot. So this allows for council's peace of mind for the tourism side of the development to be concrete and basically to give council a bit of assurance that it's going to go ahead in the appropriate way and actually deliver what we hope it will deliver for the community.
Councillor Olson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Look, I certainly think it's about time, something happening with this site. It's been, oh geez, twenty years, I think, when it first came out as Golden Bear and it's been fraying around and fraying around for a long time. And it's a bit like the vintage where it was the same for a number of years until the Stephens Group come along and they've made it into the complex it is today, done a great job of it. And I can understand the Stephens Groups having concerns about how they get, how it gets approved. And I'm sure all operators out in the tourist area are concerned that we make sure we get it right for the people. Oh, no, sun's on me. Yeah, so look, finally, we've got somewhere with it. I think it's going to be a great asset to the town, asset to the town. And when you come in from the Brankston side, you'll have the vintage on one side and you'll have this on the left-hand side. And it's going to improve the quality of entrance into the town. It's going to have facilities and jobs that will be second to none. And I think it's just a great asset for the community and to have the golf course designed by, whatever his name was, can't think of it. Yeah, it just seems amazing that we're going to get that in Cessnock area. With all the fine golf courses we already have, it's good to get, even though get another one. Certainly golf is a big sport and it brings a lot of people into the area and it means they can stay longer with more courses to play. And the longer they stay, the more money they spend in the area and the more they put into back into the community. So I think, yeah, definitely fully support it.
Thank you. No further debate. We'll put the motion. All those in favour, unanimous? Thank you, councillors. Now move on to consideration and adoption of all reports by Englobo. Councillor Burke?
Yeah, I've just got to get my... Thank you, Mr Mayor. Having read and considered the reports in the agenda related to items CC five, council recess period, decisions made under delegated authority, CC seven, investment report, December twenty twenty-two and CC eight, investment report, January twenty twenty-three, council adopting the recommendations as printed for those items.
They're seconded. Councillor Sander. No debates. We'll put those items. All those in favour, unanimous. Now moving on to report NI one twenty twenty-three, notice of intention to deal with matters into confidential session for report WI thirteen twenty twenty-three. Someone moving that way? Councillor Dunn seconded councillor Hill. No debate. All those in favour, unanimous. No, Meryl Minnetts. Motions of urgency. Councillor Olson?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a motion of urgency. I have many concerns about how our council's been led and I have a motion that states the vote of no confidence be put in the directive of planning, Peter Mickelson and the general manager, Ken Liddell. The reasons for my urgency on this matter is the council is going backwards under these two staff members without any clear direction on improving processes or actions that will improve council support of residents on DA applications, dealing with ranger issues, even though I have raised these issues many times in open council. When I've asked GM for his support in fixing these issues, he states that he has full confidence in the director of planning's actions and the rangers. Also, you, Mayor, wanted Mr Liddell as a GM because you said he was going to improve processes and productivity, although after six months we are deferring sixteen million dollars of works tonight and looking at a well over five million dollar deficit after setting a surplus budget, with no plan from the GM on how he's going to improve this situation. Council cannot continue in this direction or we won't have a council and it needs to be addressed as a matter of urgency. That is why I'm asking for councillors to support this action as a motion of urgency.
Councillor Olson, I don't believe that a motion of urgency that couldn't be dealt with in the normal channels.
So what's the normal channels, Mayor?
Of you requiring to put in motions with notice.
Notice of motion, notice of motions. So that goes to the general manager who has to approve it. So it's a motion against him and he's the only one that approves motions, those motions. So he's going to knock it back and it's not going to get to the table.
The general manager can only not approve motions on the basis of legality. If you put forward a legal motion, I'm sure the general manager will approve its thing. So I've made, I've made my ruling.
Can I just ask the question then? Do you think that having a five million dollar deficit and sixteen million dollars worked, being after six months of this budget and nothing changing and no clear direction, do you think that's okay? It's not an urgent matter?
Councillor Olson, this is in regards to whether a motion can be dealt with under the proper channels of notice being given.
This is an urgency motion, Mayor?
And I'm saying it doesn't meet the criteria of an urgency motion and have ruled that way.
Don't we vote on this, Mayor?
No, because I've made.
So you're saying that we're running fine then? Okay.
Moving on to report PE one twenty twenty-three, development application, moving that way, councillor Burke seconded councillor Hill. No debate. Put the item. All those in favour, unanimous. Report PE two twenty twenty-three, post-exhibition community participation plan, councillor Hill moving.
I'd like to defer, move a recommendation to defer this item until, to allow for a councillor workshop to be held to better inform councillors and reach a decision on our position in regards to our approach to community participation and consultation.
So we have a motion to defer it. Is that motion seconded? It is councillor Sander. It's a procedural motion. So I'll put that motion. All those in favour, councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Wotton and Saval. Those against, those against councillors Olson and councillor Judd. I'll declare it carried. Motion's now deferred. Report number PE three twenty twenty-three, draft climate change resilient plan, public exhibition, moving that way councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Speaking on that, no councillor, speaking councillor Wotton?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. I raised a few questions on this particular document in our briefing session last week and I still am perplexed. I still am perplexed by a few things. So both major parties, the goal is by twenty fifteen net zero emissions. We all understand that, that's where things are headed. I really think that we're not seeing the big picture here as a local council and I'm hoping there's somewhere we can push back with some things. And I want to explain what I mean by that. So I mentioned some things in the briefing. I just want to go on record so everyone understands where I stand. So it's very clear and crystal. At present, there's a lot of things beyond our control. We know that as councillors. For example, the couple of things that I brought up at the briefing session were the level of waste. That's, you know, pretty much put on us from, from big business. You know, you go buy an Easter egg, for example, it's full of wrapping. You go buy anything, basically it's full of plastic and cardboard and then it's on to consumer to get rid of. I feel like council is unfairly essentially punished for this. It comes under us. So I read through this document and essentially it looks like we're looking to put in fourteen million dollars to address some, some issues regarding climate change. Now, I understand those issues. I'm all for solar panels. I'm all for, you know, renewables where they're sensible. However, I do have major concerns because when I look around our town and go into the issue of above our heads, I haven't done a head count as yet because there's so many, but there's a lot of service stations out there, for example. I don't know how many service stations would be going through Wambia Road. There's another one being approved at Hunt Lee. There's, it's like they're popping up on every corner. And this is apparently beyond our control. I raised the question because I am perplexed that it's been pushed on us as a council to fit into our budget somehow to address this issue. However, there's nothing we can do from a planning standpoint if people want to come through and set up another service station. So where does this leave us at twenty fifty when we're net zero? There's no plan in place to actually have the service stations put over to electric charge stations. There's no, there seems to be no foresight. So what we're looking at essentially is twenty fifty, we could be a ghost town of service stations, potentially, like theoretically. And I look at that fourteen million dollars and I look around the needs of the community and I go, well, and the people I talk to, now, most people know the demographic of people that I deal with on a day-to-day basis, it's the people in need. There's a major housing crisis right now. Everyone knows that. It's hard to get a rental. There's no social housing in place. You know, that's effective in the Cessnock LGA. What the fourteen million dollars could do there, it's all good to talk about, and I'm not saying it's not an important issue and we need to look at things, but the immediacy of the issues right now that I look at are people that don't have a roof over their heads. Just today, I've helped another young person establish accommodation in a hotel. There's no housing for them. There's nothing. I would like to see that money actually invested in some social housing of sorts. I'd like to see that money invested in so many other needs this community needs and is kicking and screaming for before we start looking at like a big macro picture where, quite frankly, like I feel like we're potentially missing the point by trying to rectify things that are, you know, we can rectify a small amount, but when all these things are beyond our control, it's a drop in the ocean. I feel like as a council, we need to push back somehow at why are these approvals going forward for service stations at a record rate when they're going to be phased out at twenty fifty? Councillor Olson mentioned, forgive that, son. Councillor Olson mentioned a couple of times about the level of waste. You know, I mentioned it's a huge issue, but like what do we do? It's, this seems like a unnecessary impulse for us in the immediacy, particularly with our budget being five million dollars in the red. I just think we need to look after ourselves, look at the big picture as well, but like let's address some major issues right now with some money. Thank you.
Councillor Judd?
Thank you, Mayor. I highly suggest the people of the Cessnock LGA look into what this actually is. I, like everyone, want to look after this planet, but they need to put in these climate change legislations to be able to bring into play their fifteen-minute city, or the six-city initiative, or the smart cities, whatever they try to call it and change the name of so no one knows what it is. You need to lodge your submission and have your say. I will be, as after the briefing the other night, I realise that these two go hand in hand. I won't be told that I can't go out of Cessnock because of my carbon footprint. I will not be having to use carbon credits. I asked if this the same as Oxford in England and the answer was yes. And they're doing it in Melbourne currently. So please look into this and go and have your say. It's very important.
Councillor Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Look, I can't support the climate change resilience plan for many reasons and I think we've been pushed down this track too fast without actually knowing what the problem is. And if you think about it, greenhouse gases, we need greenhouse gases for plant growth. Now, if anyone doesn't believe me, go and ask someone that owns a greenhouse, a major greenhouse that builds the greenhouse. Now, if anyone doesn't believe me, go and ask someone that owns a greenhouse, a major greenhouse that builds, that grows tomatoes and cucumbers for the, for the shops down here. They use greenhouse gases, pump greenhouse gases into their greenhouse, so it grows better. So we need their greenhouse gases. So there's a lot of misinformation out there. Someone in the oil company knows something that we don't know because like councillor Watten just said, we've got one on Abbotair Road, we've got one at Neve getting built, we've got the, up on West Cessnock Road, this, they're just coming in all the time and, and no one is stopping the people from building service centres. So are we going to keep using petrol cars? Like, I remember a few years ago, they told everyone we had to have gas cars. And now we, we're not, they want to ban gas. Like, where are we going? It, it's, there's so much misinformation about climate change and it all comes back to, to the cost coming back to the person on the floor, not the big business. It's us that's got to pay for it. Our council can't afford it. Our, our council can't afford to be looking at anything like this. It's $14 million. If, if we're already looking at over $5 million deficit when we, we're supposed to have a surplus budget. And that's, that's terrible to think that we're going to input this impost onto our ratepayers. If this gets out on display and comes back and we have to adopt it and then adopt all the things in there, we're going to have to find that money. And the support ratepayers that sit out here are going to say, well, what about our roads? How are we going to get around? Well, we might also get rid of the roads because we don't have, we're not going to have any electricity. So if we haven't got any electricity, you, you, like, we're shutting down a power station in a couple, a couple of weeks' time. So your power bills will go down because you won't have any power. Um, it's, it's just crazy that the way this, our federal government is leading us at the moment down this climate change is pushing us and pushing us. I'm all for looking after the environment, but I don't think we're looking after the right way here. And everything you buy is packaged, everything. But the big, the supplier of the packaging doesn't take it back. We've got to control it. We've got to set up our garbage dumps. We've got to get rid of it. We've got to make sure we recycle. We've got to reduce our waste. But today, with the packaging, no. Why don't we recycle all plastic? We don't. Look at the coals and Woolies did with all the plastic bags they recollected. They're getting thrown in the tip now. Like, come on. This is ridiculous and I think we need to stop this climate change stuff right now. And let's get back and focus on what we're doing as a council and look after the ratepayer and the roads and the, and the rates and the, and all the rubbish and everything else we do allow for them and everything else we support them for. And let the state and federal government take care of the climate. If they think they can fix it, fix it. But I'll tell you what, if they shut down this coal mining industry, we're not going to get any support off a state government because they're going to, they're going to lose billions of dollars once the coal mines shut down in revenue. And where that billions of dollars are going to go? We can't get any, any more funding off the state government to help us. So we're going to go broke. So anyone that thinks getting rid of coal and getting rid of power stations is the best thing since sliced bread, well, you're wrong. And I don't, I don't, I can't pay for this at all.
councillor Moors.
Thank you, mayor. I don't think, uh, back to, uh, Mr. Councillor Walton. I don't think there's any way in the world that we have the right to be able to tell anybody what they can build on the land. If the, if the petrol stations own that land, they're, they're entitled to build on that land, providing they've, the documentation is correct. If I'm going to build next door to you and build a two story house on my land, you can't tell me I can't. And I can't tell anyone else that they can't. So that's where, if they want to come into town and build petrol stations, well, we can't help it. I know that, we, I know there's a lot in the town, but the problem is council's not got the right to tell anybody what they can build on that land, providing that that land is DA'd for that premises. Thank you.
Yeah. Councillor Sander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a comment. This, um, report is actually going back to a public exhibition for twenty, uh, twenty eight days. This is the opportunity for the people of Cessnock to put their submissions in. And this report is coming back to council with the, the answers to the public exhibition. This is their time. And if the residents of Cessnock have got any issues with this plan, they should put them in writing and send them to the council. Then we can have a different aspect of what the community are feeling. So I beg the people out there in, in the community, if they have major issues with this, let us know. Because a lot of times we come, we go around this horseshoe and hardly anybody puts a public submission in. And when we get to the end of the day, we go to make some decisions in this chamber. Everybody panics and yells and screams because they don't know about it. But sorry, sorry, they've had the opportunity to have their say. So this is the chance for the community of Cessnock to stand up, put their, um, submissions in on this public exhibition timeframe and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Um, I just have some questions of, of the director, um, in regards to this report. Um, so director, just, there's been some discussion tonight about the $14 million cost to council. Um, in my understanding of the report is it talks about $15 million to bring us to net zero by 2050. But that would also mean there'd be a $6 million saving to council on top of the vision. So a twenty, this isn't a $15 million cost, this is a $21 million saving. Is that correct?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, that, that is correct. So the net benefit of the timeframe is, um, is approximately $6 million. And that was based on costs about two years ago. It was based on fuel prices being approximately a dollar a litre. So we'd expect the savings to be significantly higher than what they were modelled on. Um, plus a number of these, um, initiatives are already, um, forecast in your future budgets, like the, um, the Fogo initiative. Um, is one of the initiatives in this strategy. It's been discussed, um, by council on numerous occasions and is, um, uh, forecast to go into future budgets. So that's already been taken account of.
And, sorry, further question. So this policy itself doesn't actually endorse any expenditure itself, any endorsed expenditure in relation to any of these items would happen at a, a future operational plan, um, or budget setting meeting?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. Like any strategy, they, um, have suggestions for initiatives you might want to undertake. They still have to go through the annual budget process and unless council allocates funds for those initiatives, they won't take place.
And, um, finally, as, as councillor Sander mentioned, this is, um, not adopting a policy. This is going out to the community to seek their feedback on ideas.
Correct.
Thank you. Um, councillor Jurd, have you got a question? You've already spoken, yeah? So question, councillor Jurd.
Um, my quick question is for the director of planning and environment. Um, you just said it was off, like the figures were off a dollar a litre for fuel. Is that right? What would the cost be now? Because we know that it's not a dollar a litre for fuel, it's closer to two.
Um, yes, that's correct. So, um, when you're talking about savings from not using fuel, you're looking at about a hundred percent difference just for the fuel component. Um, so, I mean, I haven't got any figures on, on exactly how much of that $26 million benefit to council is made up of fuel costs. Um, but with those changes in the current fuel prices, you're looking at a, a hundred percent, um, better result.
And just to, to clarify for the council, that was in regards to the savings side of the thing, not the expenses side.
Can, could we get, um, more information on the, the actual money that we'd be saving to what would, it would actually be costing us?
Through, through Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think there was a, um, a document that was included with the information at the workshop, the Einbach. And I'm just looking at Mark to confirm that that was circulated to councillors, the Einbach document. Okay, yeah. So we have got a document that's got all those costings. It was done by an independent, um, consultancy who specialise in that, um, stuff. So we can make that available to council and that gives you the methodology behind how these, um, savings worked out.
No worries. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, councillor Watten in reply. No, no, sorry, no, you didn't move it. You've already spoken. So, um, any questions or?
So just. Jen, I, I won't go right of reply because I already have spoken, so I'll abide by that. Um, however, I just, uh, there was talk, and I don't, I don't know if it's materialised yet, about councillors having gatherings in different areas of the community where we can engage with the community. We see a lot of things go on public exhibition that normally people provide feedback on, and I think it's due to the fact of people don't know where to go and have their say on things. So I guess the question that I'll circumvent from my previous reply, I was going to reply to other councillors, is, is that a motion? And how can we better assist our community have says on items like this? So we can maybe, uh, fill in a CAR, for example, on their behalf.
Uh, yes, I suppose that's a question of me. Um, so yes, I have been working to coordinate, um, councillor community, um, engagement, drop in sessions in the different wards. Um, and I'll get some information out to councillors, um, around that when we, um, able to start them off.
Okay.
So yes.
Thank you.
Um, no further debate. Uh, we'll now put the motion, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval. Those against councillors Painter, Watten, Alson and Jurd. I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving on to report, uh, PE five twenty twenty three, uh, moving that way. Councillor, uh, Hill, moving, eh, as is, yep. Slight modification to it. Where's the, the modification? Sorry.
Great.
Sorry.
Just to remove points A and B from number five on the dot point, uh, as well as, just so that I would like for dot point five to only read, receive a report back on the planning proposal and development control plan and just remove the, the points about only coming back to council if there are unresolved objections.
Yep, so, um, councillor.
Everything after amendment and onwards to be removed.
Yep, so you're putting a full stop at amendment and then deleting.
Yep.
Yep. Um, yep, deleting all of that. Um, so moving that way, uh, seconded councillor Dunn, um, speaking councillor Hill.
I'd only briefly, in that, um, just the removal of those dot points will ensure that, um, once this has been, um, put on public exhibition, whether or not there are any community submissions, I believe that council should be given the opportunity to review a report before it is finally approved.
Yeah. Uh, councillor Alson.
Yeah, just a question, eh, um, th- this is changing our current rules. From my understanding, what I've seen reading it, changing our current rules from having a 500 people to go up to, for a small event, up to a thousand. And a thousand up to 5,000, I believe. Is that, is that, that's correct, isn't it? That's what we're doing? Yeah. So if I wanted to have, if I had a property and I wanted to put a motocross track on it and have 500 people ride a motocross bike on my property, I don't need approval from council.
And, so the director.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, it depends. Um, you need to meet all the criteria that are listed for, um, temporary uses of land plus any other, um, legislative requirements you may need to meet. So for example, if it was a motorsport event, there might be some, um, requirements under different legislation for motorsport that you might have to meet. If it was a, um, an event that had alcohol, you might have to get, um, liquor licence and things like that. So, so, um, in terms of planning, it's where basically, um, raising the threshold for the number of people that you can has, as of right, but it doesn't absolve you from requiring, um, other approvals if needed.
So do they have to go through council for those other approvals?
Not necessarily. If, for example, as I mentioned, if it was a liquor licence, they'd have to go through the appropriate agency or whoever.
Yeah. Right. So for a motor event, you'd have to go through police, I would assume? Motocross, something like, yeah, yeah. Okay. So it becomes a, it becomes an issue for me when I've had, uh, a long time on council and I've had property agreed to had to put a track on for motocross. And they had a dozen blokes going there every weekend riding motocross around on the track and the residents complained about the noise and council shut them down. Now, they could say it's a temporary event and they're allowed to do it fifty times, two times a year under, under this proposal now. And we've got no say in it really because it's, it's a temporary event. They just say it's a temporary event and they've only got 12 people there. Uh, and, and like the neighbours can't do a thing about it. I, I, I just, I'm just concerned a lot about temporary events and the size of people you're allowed to have on them and, uh, and, and how we control these types of events because I'm concerned that if someone does have a motor vehicle event of some sort, that if there's an injury on that property, have they got the right infrastructure in place? If they haven't actually come and spoke to council about what they need or spoken to the police about what they need? Because council can't go in there and say to them, you haven't got all this stuff, they're, you're holding an event. Um, we, we don't, we're not a consent authority. Go to a thousand and then, you know, um, who's going to control that number? Who's going to do a check on that number on a weekend, on a Saturday or Sunday if it's not a council issue? Uh, and then who's going to, who's going to do what about it? And who's, who's, who's the one at the end of the day that's going to have to answer to the general public? And you know who's going to get the phone calls? Uh, uh, and it's going to be us. And, and we're going to say it's out of our hands if we approve, I think if we approve this or support this motion. So, yeah, I, I guess I've got real concerns about it and I just can't support it. Sorry.
councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess this report in front of us tonight is about putting the gra- draft, um, out on exhibition. And like the previous motion, I won't, um, stop community from having their say and that's why I supported the, uh, the last, uh, report. And I'll, I'll do the same here. I'm supporting this report because I want the community to be able, be able to have their say. In addition to that, um, in, in the report, it goes into quite some detail around, uh, the regulations of events. And as the director has already alluded to, that, um, there's going to be a lot of criteria, uh, that, uh, people that want to hold the event. So someone that's just wanting to have a car rally in their backyard is, it, that's not going to be able to happen because, um, you know, if you've got up to 5,000 attendees at any one time, you need to have 80 onsite car parks, you need toilets, you need a bus stop, you know. So I guess we've got to be realistic in it. Um, and this will allow, um, a lot of events in the area, uh, that do events, uh, you know, out, out, for example, at the vineyards, you know, they do concerts, um, and, and then they do, uh, markets of, of a weekend on the same venue. Um, this is going to make the process easier. Uh, are there risks with that? Absolutely. We've always got to look at, um, how people might find a loophole to, um, build a racetrack in their backyard. Though there's a lot of things that goes into events, in particular the police. The police pay a, play a vital role in events. Um, anybody that is advertising to have, um, uh, an event are therefore, um, having a, a public, what they call a public assembly. And therefore the police have to be notified and they want to know the ins and outs. If there's, um, going to be an issue with, uh, traffic, then you're going to need a traffic management plan. And the person that's just holding something in there on their property probably won't have the credentials to, to do that. This is going to allow more events happen in the area with an easy process. Uh, and I am interested to hear the feedback. Um, there are some things in the, um, in the proposed plan that I think that we might get some feedback on from the bigger stakeholders. Um, but I, I think that we just need to, uh, have an appreciation that, um, this will certainly help, uh, professionals in the industry. I'm not saying that there's nobody that's going to exploit it, but, um, you know, if there's, if there are, um, noise complaints or anything like that, then council is able to act on that. Um, it's not saying that we, we're not the consent authority for that event, but we still also play a significant role with particular regulations in the area. Same with the state government. Um, they also play a significant part of events, uh, if need be. So look, there's a lot of, um, boxes to tick currently before you can even think about holding your event. Um, though on the flip side, I think that this will be beneficial to, uh, the community.
Yeah. Uh, councillor Watten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it's a, a draft document and I think it's important that we discuss it openly. So there's some good clarification and, um, some clear guidance for the community members when they actually make a submission, which I do encourage them to do so. A question about the actual notice period. So it says here, uh, notification must be given to adjoining properties at least seven days before the event starts. So provided they've ticked the boxes, they've done. So provided they've ticked the boxes, they've done everything they need to do, the person, company, whoever's holding the event. What is the, the process? Is there a draft process for a ride for reply for adjoining properties as it stands right now?
Uh.
And who would that go to?
Director.
At, at the moment, I mean, part of the reason for bringing this up is we do not have many of these rules in currently. And we're trying to close that loophole. I need to emphasise that this is about reducing red tape. The commu- the feedback we've had from the community is that if they wanna do some economic development activity, a small activity, there's too many hoops to jump through. Strictly speaking, they have to apply for a D A. Um, chief executive and myself are committed to reducing red tape and making the planning process easier. This is one of these initiatives. So it's about making things easier for the community, not having them jump through hoops to apply for D A for a temporary event that might be of great community benefit, minimal financial benefit to the organisation. That's what this is about. In terms of, um, notifying neighbours, things like that. If we need to, we will assist people with, um, developing generic forms so that they know how to commu- communicate with their neighbours. Usually it's a case of just going over and speaking to them. What we find is that ninety nine point nine percent of applicants will do the right thing, whether that's apply for a D A or comply with the, um, temporary, um, rules. The rat bags who don't apply for D As aren't gonna be influenced by this. They're still gonna do what they wanna do. Um, but this is trying to assist economic development within the L G A, reducing red tape, make it easier for everyone.
Um, thanks. Just can I just follow up with that? Thank you for, for that information. Just, I've, I've, I've got concerns this will quickly become very top-heavy. So, for example, in my mind and through talking to residents, the, the top issues that come to my mind are the mixed use areas in, in Lovedale, for example. We have got, uh, wineries, you've got cellar doors, you've got restaurants and they neighbour onto residential properties. And I've spoken to a few people that have got some major concerns and you mentioned the word rat bag, your term, not mine. But there, there, there is a little bit of, you know, there, there, there are issues like that happening as it stands like right now and getting bureaucracy on typically awful, but I'm really concerned that this, you know, and this is where we need the feedback from the community, that this will become too top-heavy. And therefore, once something's in place, well, I'm sorry, but there's nothing else we can really do about it. Um, yeah, so I've got some concerns about that. Thank you.
Here councillor Olson, questions?
I have two questions, Mayor. They're for the director of planning. Uh, you said you got feedback from the community, so that's why you've brought that here. How did you get that feedback?
Um, yes, our economic development officer in his role, uh, of talking with particularly people who put on events and the businesses, particularly in the vineyard area, he's been, um, part of, part of the impetus behind this. And in his discussions with those communities, they're saying, look, we wanna put on these temporary events, but the hurdle's too high going through a D A, especially if it's just a, you know, one weekend in a year. And so that's where the majority of that feedback has come from and obviously we'll expect more through the, um, submission process.
And, and second question, do you need a traffic management plan if you've got under a thousand people?
Under a thousand, um. Again, I, um, generally no, but it depends exactly on what the event is. Because if, for example, it is going to attract a lot of, um, a lot of members of the community, um, or in vehicles particularly, we would be, um, seeking that, that sort of, um, approval. But again, it sort of depends on the event. Um, and I just wanna touch on something that our councillor Watten mentioned. This is your policy. If you're finding it's not working, you change it. Um, that's, you know, that's what you can do. Once it's there, it's not set in concrete. If parts of it are found not to be working so effectively, then change it.
I can understand.
Uh, can I just, um, uh, confirm with the director on some questions? This isn't just a, a free-for-all on like on events. There are still set criteria around the, um, not only the maximum number of people, but the times that it can happen. The, whether there's toilets, water, how the rubbish is dealt with, um, when signage is put up. And, um, requiring public liability insurance and also notifying the police, uh, rural fire service and ambulance as well as, uh, the neighbouring properties. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that, that is correct. And I, I would just point out that we do have a number of, um, events that occur at the moment that operate under these temporary provisions. Um, we had one recently that was in relation to market where as a result of the success of that market, we started to get complaints about how often it was occurring, traffic, et cetera. We're now currently working with that, um, applicant to get them to apply for a full D A where, you know, things like traffic management and parking and all those sorts of things have cons- are considered. So, I mean, it's an opportunity for people to try something. If it's successful, they may have to get a D A to allow it to continue. And that's exactly what we wanna see happen.
Thank you. Uh, no further debate. We'll put the motion. All those in favour? Uh, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter and Savell. Those against, uh, councillors Watten, Olsen and Jurd. I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving through to report C C one twenty twenty three, minutes of the community engagement awards committee, moving that way. Uh, councillor Burke, seconded councillor Hill. Uh, speaking councillor Olson.
Yeah, I've just got a question, Mayor. I was just wondering where the, um, Australia Day Awards were. They haven't come back to council for endorsement.
Uh, I'm expecting the, the report will be at the next, um, meeting.
What date did you have, hold that? Fourteenth of December, wasn't it?
I'm not aware of the date of, of being, but I'm expecting.
I just wondered why it's taken two months to get that report here then? Why does it take two months to extend a report? We've already handed the awards out and we haven't approved them yet.
Yep. Well, I, I've answered the question.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned that the council might not support the committee and if they didn't, the, the Australia, the Mr. Bedford might have to bring his citizen of the year back. Um, who knows? But although, yeah, we'll, we'll wait till next, next meeting then, I suppose.
Uh, any other debate on this item? Councillor Jurd.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't know if it's really a debate, but it's just more of a question if we can, um. There's a few committees lately that I've not realised that are on, things like that. I was just wondering, how do we go about changing it up a little bit? Sorry, what was that?
Hi, um, councillor Jurd has the floor.
That's all. Um, okay, so basically, uh, it's a little off topic. One of the community meeting things in particular was this one. I didn't actually, I forgot that I was on the committee. Right? You can laugh what you want. It's quite easy to forget. Um, so I'm just hoping that maybe we could work at maybe when we get sent out an email to say this committee's on, just a little side note underneath, this is your committee and this is who's on the list. Uh, yeah, or, you know, not a two-minute, um, reminder that something's on because that happened today too. Ta.
Um, I might ask one of the, the directors or, or someone to take on notice, but we, um, can probably send out an email to all councillors advising them of who's on what committees. And then if councillors do wish to change any of the committees they're on, they can let me know and we can work out how we deal with that, uh, in the future. Uh, no debate on this item. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Uh, C C two twenty twenty three, uh, review of the, uh, twenty twenty two to twenty six delivery programme. Moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Dunn. Uh, speaking on this councillor Hill.
I have a question for perhaps the director of corporate or director of infrastructure. This delivery programme update, the report that is attached to this, um, meeting, is that made, uh, besides being in the council minutes, is it at all made available on the council website alongside the initial adopted delivery programme that we first voted in so that the community can have access to that updated list of information? I know councillor Dunn's previously raised this about being, giving the community access to sort of a more up-to-date version of our delivery programme because the one currently available on the website still lists all items as they were voted on and agreed to back when we first adopted the delivery programme. Um, there's some great information in this update about where different projects around the L G A are. Um, and I think that'd be great if the community had much easier access. Uh, I know it'll be in the council minutes, but it's quite difficult to dig through uh, a large agenda and of the minutes and find this information.
Director. Yeah, thank you. Um, thank councillor Hill. Yes, you are correct. And there is a draft on my desk, um, from our, um, integrated planning and reporting officer, um, doing a snapshot of all the changes so that can be, can be captured. It's just a matter of making sure that, um, reflects what is in the reports and, um, certainly have to have that out to for the councillors to review, excuse me, to review by the end of this month. And then we'll have it live as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Fantastic.
Uh, councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mayor. If I'm understanding this report right, we're deferring Sandy Creek Road. Can everyone sitting on this panel and every councillor here tonight look at these residents that have to drive this dangerous and damaging road and daily and vote in favour of deferring this? I know the excuses, I hear them daily, but why is our rates going on new parks? They shouldn't come before road safety issues or buying land that we don't need at this stage, et cetera. Where did the grant money of one million six hundred and twenty thousand go for the section of road out the front of one O five one Sandy Creek Road? That was successful of a grant in April twenty twenty one. That was scheduled for October twenty twenty one. And here we are deferring this road again in twenty twenty three. Then there's more issues on this, on this thing that I could go on for ever and a day and everyone at home would be shaking their head in disbelief. One, one of the other things is seven on the list for the roads and only one completed. Like, and then we got, um, hang on, I got a little con- a little lost. Last year alone. Okay, then we've got the drainage issues, twenty one on the list and only three completed. Yeah, last year alone, if we had drainage looked into and solved prior to my term, would we have the flooding issues that we've had? We've got traffic issues, eighteen on this list and only one completed. Out of two hundred and four, two hundred and four, sixty four projects, we completed twenty four. This really needs to change. Otherwise the list of jobs is going to get even bigger and we'll never be able to actually plan, do any plans like we did at the, our start of our term, that will ever see the light of day. I really think we need to look into our practice and see what we can do to have a better working environment and a shorter list of projects that actually get completed. Um, as they have put it, no risk implications. Unfortunately, I wish that was correct. But everyone, but anyone here would know if you put off a job and then go to complete that job later, what happens? The cost of the project goes up. So your budget of, let's say, ten thousand would now be fifteen thousand and so on. So I'd like to, if I can, put an amendment up so that I can support this, that we take Sandy Creek Road off the deferring list and place it back on the production list. Thank you.
Uh, so, so the wording of the amendment, so is it adding a, a dot point?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
I'm not very good with the wording, so if you could help me with that, that would be great.
I, I might just seek some clarification from the director, um, of works, probably about the ability to like, I, I'm assuming it's proposed to have been removed off for a reason. Not just because we don't wanna do it. So, um, yeah, if I could defer to the director just before we.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your, um, question councillor Jurd. Um, look, I'll take that on notice and, and look into Sandy Creek Road and, and we'll do what we can to get it back on the list.
If that's the case, can we defer this report to next? So we got a chance to get, he's mo- mo- um, take it on notice? To get that information, to see if we can add amendment for Sandy Creek Road?
Um, the director of.
To your proposal, there would be no need to defer this report tonight. Certainly if the director can look at it and provide the councillors with some information in regards to the ability or otherwise to reinstate Sandy Creek Road and what the impacts would be on other projects. Um, that could be subject to a notice of motion or a report to council and you, you can make a decision at the, at the next council meeting.
Cause I've done a notice of motion on Sandy Creek Road prior to this as well. That's why I'm pushing. Okay.
What I'm suggesting, councillor Jurd.
Leave it as a member as point three, what, four? Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm getting help.
Sorry, but just if we can get a report off the acting director before the next meeting, so.
That's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, Robert.
Is that a first point three?
Um, and so I know, um, in their referencing as, as well, cause I know councillor Hill and, um, Grine and I have had conversations around, um, Deacon Street at Curry as well. Um, so maybe if we can include that, um.
I'm happy to include Deacon Street.
The, the, the general manager, um, provide a memo to councillors, uh, advising on the ability to, uh, re-include uh, works on Sandy Creek Road and Deacon Street. Sandy Creek Road, Quora Long. Um, Q U. For a long, yeah. Um, and Deacon Street, Curry Curry. In this year's o- operational plan, in this year's, yeah. Operational plan.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
With that, uh, seconded on that councillor Hill. Um. Oh, Hill and Dunn were moved in the first place. They're happy to take it into the motion. So, um, it can become. Is that, um, so it now forms part of the motion?
Yep.
Um, so if we remove that line of, that whole line, yep. Yep. Um, and comfortable on, on that. So it's now part of the motion. Uh, speaking on this motion, councillor Olson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, I've got a question first. On the, in the sup-, uh, the supplementary documents we've got on page two forty five. There's a intersection of works Curly Street and Occident Street in Alkaba. It says revised drawings estimated for submission to Transport New South Wales by mid-January. Has that happened?
Director.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yes, yes, that has been submitted. Um, the cha- minor changes were directed by Transport for New South Wales and those documents have been resubmitted.
So why wasn't it brought back to council for endorsement when this has, this been a major issue? It should have come to council before we sent it away.
Do you wanna answer that to the director?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. There, there was no change to the, um, arrangement a- itself. It was more like dimensions and, uh, like taking away a cur- the curved bypass lane and putting in a, a straight bypass lane. So effectively it didn't change the operation of the intersection. Um, so therefore it wasn't really a change to the treatment. It was just a change to the detail on the plan.
So is it, is it blocking Curly Street at Occident Street so traffic can't go straight up?
Exactly as the plan was.
That, so that's the plan. So we're still going to have Curly Street blocked completely and Occident Street blocked completely. So any traffic coming out of correctional, the correctional centre has to go right.
Not, not Curly Street was, wasn't in the plan to be blocked. It was Pinchin and Occident Street.
It originally wasn't. That was council, that was council's decision that no traffic went up Curly Street past that intersection.
So we're, we're not here to debate the director's response, but, um, if I can just clarify for councillor Olson, my understanding is that there has been community consultation on this for the traffic committee process. Uh, and the traffic committee, uh, will then report back to council. So council will see it to make a determination, uh, as would be required before any changes are implemented.
We've already sent a plan off, Mayor. We've already sent a pe- plan off to be approved by Transport, tra- traffic New South Wales. And we as a council had supported the Alkaba residents a hundred percent saying no traffic will go up Curly Street, past Occident Street and nothing will go down Occident Street to right into Alkaba. So we were supporting that. Now we've got a different plan and we've sent it away. It hasn't come back to council. The residents told me that you told them that in a briefing session that council decided we were gonna do, support that changes. Nothing gets decided out there. It all gets decided in here, Mayor. And that should have come back to us before it goes anywhere. Because we are supposed to be representing the Alkaba residents and we're letting them down by not standing up for them. And also in this report, we got, we've got Curly and Occident Street being deferred to next financial year. This road's going to be open in April. So where's the traffic going to go in April? It's going to go straight down Occident Street if it wants, or straight up Curly Street if it wants. It's going to be a rat run. And then when, when we, when we decide we're going to do this work, it's too late then. The traffic's already going that way. Could, could be too late for a school kid crossing the road. It could be late for a res- an older resident there that walks around the streets in their nice little residential area they live in. I think we are letting these people down by not having it bring, brought back to council before it got sent away. And telling the residents it was decided in a briefing session is totally incorrect. We cannot decide anything in a briefing session. It's all decided in here, in, in open council. We don't hide behind closed doors. We do it in open council. I wish everyone else knew what else was getting beside Sandy Creek Road. There's so many things on this road, the Brankston, the Greater Cycleway, getting deferred again. What else have we got deferred? South Sessnoth flood mitigation, two, over two million dollars worth of work. Don't worry about South Sessnoth, it might flood again. Curly Street's not getting done. Mountview Road, well, there's a road you've deferred. I don't know how many times, ma'am. When you were sitting over here as a councillor, you deferred it because we don't want to do it, don't want to do it. How much money have we spent over there trying to repair that road? Wasting time and not getting it done. So we're going to defer Mountview Road again. Quora Long, Kitchener, Sandy Creek Road. It just goes on and on and on. And it's disgraceful. This council sits here and does nothing about it, and everybody else is happy. I can't believe it. At least a couple of the councillors here care about the residents. And I'm sorry, but I, I do get upset, I get emotional. But I am, I've had a gut full of people telling me that we're looking after the residents and when we do things behind closed doors and hide the fact that we're not going to look after Nalkabar, and we're going to let that road be open. And there's no need for Curly Street to be open. You can access that top gate from any, any other street. You can get in the old entrance if they need to get in, but the main road they're going to put in there up Curly Street and in Occident Street will take any vehicle in, any vehicle that wants to get into that correctional centre. We don't need that top gate open. It's never opened, it never has been opened, and they don't need it to be opened. So we don't need Curly Street open. And if, if anyone in this room wants to support the residents, this is the time we stand up and stand up for the people of of Nalkabar who've had to put up with a lot of worries over many years about traffic being moved from the correctional centre over on their side. Lindsay Street had it, they're getting rid of it, they're cheering. But the people in Nalkabar aren't. And it's very, I think it's disgraceful of this council not to be prepared and have this work done before the jail opens the centre up.
Councillor Olson, can I just clarify, uh, again that no decisions are made at briefings, um, but councillors are. Councillor Olson, no decisions on behalf of councillors are made at briefings. Councillors are briefed on items. Uh, and if you attended the briefings, if you attended the briefings, you would know. Point of order, councillor Olson.
Are you saying why I'm a liar?
I'm saying that there was no decision made on behalf of.
I have, I have an email that you, I have an email that you sent to the residents saying it was decided in a briefing session in there on the twenty second of October that you, the, the, uh, the road will be done a certain way. Don't tell me you didn't take it. I've got it, I've got it, I've got the email. I'll bring it in.
That's not a point of order. Councillor Hawkins has the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I should probably apologise for not jumping in earlier, um, but, um, Curly, Pinchin and Occident Street in Alkaba are before the traffic committee on this coming Wednesday. We, um, inspected the site today. If you know, what was that performance all about? So the, um, proposal before the traffic committee is that council authorises the installation of intersection controls, line marking and road closures at Curly, Pinchin and Occident Streets in Alkaba, in accordance with the enclosed Curly, Pinchin, Occident Street, Nalkabar signage and line marking diagrams. Um, the matter's then referred to the numerous backwards and forwards between what council have presented on behalf of the residents and what um, Roads Maritime wouldn't accept. So we, we've come with something. And, um, it, it's actually listed as a priority. Installation of the proposed treatment is considered a high priority to allow the intersection works to commence following the impending completion of road construction whilst being carried out by contractors on behalf of Creative Services New South Wales. So to say that we do, to say that we do.
Councillor Olson, councillor Hawkins has the floor.
The works somewhat have to be deferred until the plan is approved by Roads Maritime Services, what are they called? Transport for New South Wales. So we can't commence the works until we have approval for what is acceptable in a road design. So that process is happening, it is occurring. It's not this secret neglect or anything like that. Um, it's happening and there is a, a proposed solution that hopefully satisfies everybody and it's something that we can build fairly quickly and fairly effectively. So I, I think we can stop jumping at shadows and creating this huge fear in the community that things happen the wrong way around and that there's some conspiracy to neglect people or to, to do these things. So I, I think that the staff should be commended for, for following the process, for following the procedure. And I'm hoping that this will be a good outcome for the people of Nalkabar.
Uh, councillor Burke.
Oh, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess if you want to be critical and upset with someone, be critical and upset of the state government. Uh, not those that represent the grassroots, because not once have I heard in this chamber that we as councillors are walking away from the residents of Nalkabar. You're not the only one that represents the community. Um, we all don't have to grandstand to do work with the community. Uh, so if you want to be critical, be critical of those that are forcing our hand with this. We haven't had, uh, the say that we'd like since the beginning in two thousand and sixteen. So to say that, you know, there's a couple of people that are still representing, I'm sorry, but this motion tonight is not telling me that I'm walking away from the Nalkabar community. I'm in contact with Nalkabar residents on a daily basis because they want an up, they want an update on what's happening. And to say that a decision was made in the briefing, I was at that briefing and it was a great discussion between staff and councillors about our expectations. And if you weren't at that briefing, I apologise for that. But a decision was not made, as the mayor has already said. I, like councillor Olson is saying, uh, the mayor has done, I did talk to residents about it. And I said that a discussion had been had around what we would like, and that is what we've wanted to do from the beginning, and that's close off Curly and Occident Street. And we are not walking away from that. If the resident that I spoke to about that took that as a decision at a briefing, that's their problem, not mine. So to come in here and to accuse this council of making decisions behind closed doors is inappropriate and unprofessional. And I get that it is upsetting. I'm furious over it. We are doing something about it. But just coming in here and voting against everything all the time is going to get nowhere. So how about we, just because the plan's already been sent off, we just heard from the chairperson of the traffic committee tell us that the closure of Curly and Occident Street is still on the table? So again, misinformation, changing the words around to try and put fear into the community that we're walking away. Well, I'm here to tell you that we are supporting the Nalkabar residents. There's a process that we have to go through and I'm happy to keep banging on the door. But we're certainly not walking away. And as we've heard from councillor Hawkins, it's exciting that there's going to be road closures possibly approved in Curly Street because that's exactly what all of the councillors in this chamber have been advocating for, even those not here. Those that were here in two thousand and sixteen, that same group, you're not alone, councillor Olson. There's other people that support and represent the community. We just make sure that the process is followed and that we will have the result. We certainly will. And we can't wait until that happens, right? You would agree with me. We cannot wait for that to happen, and it will.
Councillor Olson, you've already spoken. Question, councillor Olson.
Oh, yeah. Oh, sorry. Um, oh, what was my question there? Oh, I just, um, the, the factor, the question I have is relating to the traffic committee. Uh, at the last council meeting, we had a traffic committee meeting, uh, come through. And part of that traffic committee was Ferguson Street putting in, uh, Crossing Bay for the new walk. Now, that was already installed before the traffic committee report got to council. So are we saying that if we wait for a traffic committee to meet, although the, the acting director's already said he's sent the plan away to Traffic Transport New South Wales, if we're waiting for the traffic committee to meet on the twentieth, then we will then have a, a plan that's already been sent away, approved by our director, and some council staff must have done it, had planned it. Are we saying that that plan's going to come back and we're going to send a new plan off? Is that correct?
I, I think the, if, um, we can talk about what was discussed at the briefing and the logic behind it was.
Ma'am, ma'am, I've asked a question. I want an answer to the question I asked. Are we going to pull that other plan back and put in a new one? Or, or is the plan that's been sent away by our acting director the final plan?
I, the director can answer first.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, councillor Olson. Um, given the functionality of the treatment is the same, it's essentially the same plan. It's a minor detail change. So yes, it's the same plan that has been brought before this, uh, you have a council before.
I'll, I'll tell you, the plan that I've, is going to the traffic committee is different to what we want. We have always said we wanted both roads. The, the plan that's going to the traffic committee has access straight up Curly Street to the rear entrance of the jail. So it's different to what council had supported, ma'am. And I'm asking the question, are we going to pull that one back and put one in?
Yeah, so the question was around why, like, why was the report sent to Transport for New South Wales um, before it's gone to the traffic committee and on consultation? And to answer that, which was discussed at the briefing, is that last time we supported uh, a plan for that site, it was rejected by Transport for New South Wales. If we want to get to a point where we can actually get something to happen in that place and protect the Nalkabar community from, uh, the traffic rat runs that we see out of the current entrance, we need to work with Transport for New South Wales and put forward a solution that they are able to support as well. So there would be a whole considerable amount of work going between our council offices and Transport for New South Wales to come up with a plan that has then gone to the traffic committee for consideration, which has then gone out on community consultation for community feedback on that, which will then go for determination by the traffic committee on what they recommend, which will then come to council to endorse those minutes. So.
So, so why did we send the drawing off in January?
Because if we endorse something like we endorsed before, that Transport for New South Wales are going to refuse. We're wasting our time, we're wasting the residents' time, and we're potentially having a situation where we end up with the new entrance open and no works done. And if you want to go and have no works done on that entrance before it works, then go down your path and let's try and campaign against this. But we need works done before that entrance starts and we need it to go through the traffic committee and be supported by Transport for New South Wales before we can do that. So let it run its process and it will be with us when it's.
Question, ma'am. So the plan that's been put into the traffic committee is the plan that this council would be looking at supporting, which means Curly Street will not be closed off at Occident Street.
The, the plan that's on exhibition at the moment recommends closures of Curly Street at both Occident Street and Pinchin Street, uh, meaning there is no traffic that can go from the jail into the, uh, village of Nalkabar. It would, its only direction out of the jail is to able to go back out towards Wine Country Drive and onto the state road network. And that is what council has always supported.
No, it's not. No, it's not. That's incorrect. We've always supported closing off uh, Curly Street at Occident Street, so no traffic could go up. And nothing could go down Cur- from down Curly down Occident Street. And in this, in this, what the, the, what we're talking about now says we're going to defer all work on that intersection until next financial year, and it's opening in April.
We cannot do any works until something's approved by the traffic committee and council. So I think we've.
We've done work before the traffic committee.
I've given you more than enough leeway, councillor Olson, on this. You've already spoken on this matter.
I'm asking another question, ma'am. Have we not done work before the traffic committee, committee has approved, has come back to council for approval? We have done it before and we can do it again. You're just looking for excuses.
No, um, so, um, speaking councillor, um, councillor Hill will close debate, so we need to go. Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, can we get an update on, uh, when we were at the, when we had the briefing, we had the conversations around the development above Curly Street that was proposed or was in a an infancy of proposal regarding, I think it was between two hundred and eighty and three hundred house blocks, um, above, uh, Curly Street that would need to come down Curly Street. Um, can we have an update on, on that?
Director, no, so you have to take it on notice? Um, yeah, the directors indicated it'll take that on notice.
Thank you. Um, and why I say that, and, and you do note, um, m- m- Mr. Mayor, the two, uh, roads that uh, proposed to be closed and councillor Olson is, is questioning why, um, Curly Street right at that intersection itself isn't supposed to be closed, uh, is supposed to be closed. And my understanding was, from what I gathered in the, um, in the briefing was, there was consideration for the, uh, up and coming proposal for the development north, uh, sorry, to be west of, um, Curly Street that would need would have its only intersection, uh, its only, um, through fair coming out onto Wine Country Drive down Curly Street. So I can understand right now if the proposal is to cut those two, uh, roads off into Nalkabar and stop the rat run going through Nalkabar, but I can also understand that, um, there's only a small part of Curly Street at the moment. If, if it was blocked off, we'd have to essentially unblock it to allow for up to, up to three hundred new houses in the new estate that, that may be coming online anyway. So I think it'd be futile if we cut that, um, that intersection off at Curly Street, on Curly Street and just stick with the other two that are proposed, as you have noted.
Yeah. Is that a comment? No, not a question, no. Um, councillor Grine.
Thank you, ma'am. I, I have just a question for one of the directors or the general manager. Um, this motion is about, you know, council approving changes to the current operational plan. Can you just give me a brief on why that is necessary based on the, the deficit that we have?
Um, thank you, councillor Grine. Um, as it's a council, as in the elected council, it's your document. Um, any changes that do need to be done by resolution of council, excuse me, resolution of council, similar with the next report where we're looking to change budget items. So again, that's a decision of council to make to amend those strategic documents.
So roads like Sandy Creek and, and Nalkabar residents and Head and Greater and whatnot, it's not like we're prioritising one over the other. It's, we have to address them all equally as we can and had, and as we can afford them. Am I correct in saying that? And as we can get supplies, staff to do these jobs.
Um, the director, and I think it actually goes back to something councillor Judd asked for in, in her comments or in the night, is about a more concise list of works that are we, that we are more likely to deliver. And that is exactly what tonight's changes are delivering. It's looking at what we can deliver as a council, where our resources are able to go, what our staffing capacities are, and going, okay, it's no point talking about seventy three million dollars, um, worth of capital works, which I think has gone up, was potentially more. Um, it's about bringing it back to what is a more realistic figure and therefore reducing it to. and therefore reducing it to the fifty-six, from memory, um, million dollars, um, worth of capital works programmes. So, it's, I, I think, does that answer your, your question?
Yes, it does. So, I just have one more question. What, um, amount of works was delivered in the last financial year? Do you know that off by hand? Just to give the community some sense of where we're going with it.
Director.
Um, I don't know the figure off the top of my head, councillor Groan. We'd have to, um, take it on notice and provide you with that information.
Would you say it was a lot less or, or more than what we're currently doing now?
Record spend.
A lot, it would be less than we're currently looking at this year. Um, and certainly, um, at this point in time, if everything goes to plan, we'll be on the record spend limit of where we're going to be with our capital works. Certainly not where we wanted it to be. Um, but as you mentioned with all those issues around resourcing and, and, and the like and timing of various grants and the like, um, we can't get where we want it to be.
And these are the things that we've briefed on all the time. We just don't seem to see a lot of us, or some of us here for those briefings. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Um, so just a question for me to the director before councillor Hill closes up. Um, so based on that comment, as the, the works that are planned, um, and forecasted for where we're heading at the moment, um, we potentially are still spending more and doing more works than we have in any other year of council. Is that correct?
Yep, thank you, Mesavell. That is correct.
Uh, councillor Hill in closing.
Thank you, Mesavell. Just wrapping back around to that, um, dot point that councillor Judd added in, in regards to both the items she raised and the item I raised. Um, all councillors, when looking at this, this plan, if you have queries like councillor Judd and I have had in regards to looking to ensure certain projects are included in this operational plan, we need to be aware of the cost that they include and the possibility that other items on this list will need to be, will need to fall back to a, to a future year to accommodate our reprioritisation. I know the, the item and the amount of spending for the Deacon Street project that was originally going to be pushed back and hopefully is able to be re-included was about sixty thousand dollars for initial design works for that street. That means that I think, I, I, the onus is almost on us in Ward D who want to make this a priority to help identify a project that we think should be pushed back. You know, we, we cannot come in here and, and ask for and claim that we want certain projects pushed forward without, um, taking the responsibility to identify something that we think can be pushed back further. Um, I, I do worry that some of these projects that have very, very high demand and very high budget do mean that a large number of other projects may have to fall off the operational plan and end up being pushed back like these were, just to allow us to get these tip ones done. But, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, with no further debate on our put, the, uh, the motion, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Judd and Savell. Those against councillor Olson, I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving on to report CC twenty-three, uh, CC three, twenty twenty-three. Uh, quarterly, uh, budget review statements. Moving that way, councillor Hill seconded councillor Sander. Uh, speaking on that, councillor Olson.
Yeah, there, I'm, I was shocked when I got this report, um, to tell us we're going to have a, we're looking at a five-point-two million dollar deficit. I, I'm just wondering what you think you can sell this time to balance the budget?
Councillor Olson, can I just suggest you may be shocked because you didn't attend the briefing we had in regards to it?
So, oh, okay. Well, maybe, maybe you could tell the general public what you're going to sell then.
So.
To balance the budget. Like, last, last budget, you had to sell Vineyard Grove off quick. We, we could, we could have had.
Yeah.
We had, we could have had another ten million dollars if we kept, we kept Vineyard Grove. So, what, what are we going to sell off this time to balance the budget?
I don't know at this stage. Uh, that'd be, have to be a question for, uh, the finance director or the, the director of Corporate Community Services, but, uh, whether there is a plan to balance the budget.
So, you, you say we're going to run with the, we're, we're looking at a minimum five million dollar deficit at the mo- at the moment. Uh, after we set, six months ago, we set a budget that was going to be, uh, balanced with a surplus. So, we're down to five million after six months. So, we're all happy to see that we're running with a five million dollar deficit at this point in time and sixteen million dollars worth of work's not getting done and a possibility of even more not getting done, probably another sixteen million, which could take us to thirty-two million dollars worth of work not getting done and having a five million dollar deficit and everybody's happy. I'm certainly not, and I'm certainly dis- disappointed with what's happened over the last six months. To think that this, this is where we're heading and this is what we've set this council up for.
Councillor Olson has the floor. Please, councillors.
This is what we set this council up for. We got rid of the other general manager. We got a new general manager who was going to fix the problems. And I, I haven't heard a thing from the general managers, how are we going to fix these problems? How are we going to get a better source of income? How are we going to improve this, this, the budget, budget figures and how are we going to get the work done? I tried to get a briefing but couldn't get that. I was knocked back to find out how he was going to do it. And now we're sitting here and mocking me because I'm concerned that we've got a five million dollar deficit. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned it was, this could be thirty-two million dollars worth of work not completed, which means next year it's going to go up seven percent to eight percent. That's thirty-two million dollar cost with the current CPI running around to seven and eight percent. It will be going up eight, eight percent, which is going to push it up to around thirty-five million. Which pushes other projects further and further behind and less and less we get done. So, I, I might, I might be the bad guy here, but I don't think that's good enough. In six months, I don't think that's good enough. And I don't think going, attending a briefing is going to make me think any different to what, what, what I'm thinking now. That's a disgraceful performance and we need, we need to look at how we fix this deficit and how we make sure we get our work complete. And nothing is being shown to me by any leadership in here on how this is going to happen. None whatsoever. And we need to change the processes and nothing is happening. It's just the same old thing every day and the same old thing on how we fill potholes. We don't even have a whacker pack and a knock the hole, pack the holes down when we fill them. We leave the cars do that and they get covered in tar and they're all out of the road, all over the place. We need to change our processes. We need to be showing to the community that we can lead this community. But at the moment, all I can see is going out the back door as we slide down this chute with a five million dollar deficit at this point, at this point, which it could be even worse. It could get better, but I don't think so with the cost of everything going up as it is, the cost of fuel going up so much, the cost of everything going up, and we're not adjusting to stop this, this slide down the slippery dip and out the back door. Unfortunately, you can bag me, you can have a crack at me all you want. I'm not going to change my views on it. I'll put it on Facebook tomorrow and tell you, tell the people what's happening with the council. I know yous don't want them to know, but I'll tell them and that might upset you and you might get offended by it and you might want to censure me again. But that's all right because I've got thick skin. And offensive, being offended is, being offended, one person gets offended and they want to censure me? Like, God, and that's another thirty-five thousand dollars wasted every time you want to censure me. And that's why we keep getting the deficits. We just can't control ourselves here. And we take, we take everything personal instead of taking it, taking it on the chin and standing up for the community like some of us do.
Councillor Dunn.
I've got no words. Um, thank you. Um, firstly, um, five million dollar deficit. Are we able to get just a snapshot breakdown of what that actually comprises, please, for the community to understand it?
Manager, no, sorry, chief financial officer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, the first thing to note is that the five million dollar deficit is an operating deficit. In terms of a statutory result, it is actually a surplus, but it's, um, bolstered by capital income. When you take out capital income, we are predicting a, a five million dollar operating deficit, of which two-point-nine million dollars relates to remediation works from the flood events of March and June of last year. We have received some funding for that that was recognised in the thirty-June financial statements, as well as some original, um, expenditure to, particularly for the March events that we were already, um, remediating works for. The balance of it primarily is an increase in depreciation as we are required to each year increase the value of our assets or replacement value. Uh, accordingly, most of that comes through with a cost for depreciation that ultimately will have to be funded into the future. Uh, but at this moment in time is, for all intents and purposes, a non-cash item.
Thank you. So, my understanding is we've got two million dollars, um, worth of, um, disaster recovery, recovery money that was, uh, we've had come in, but there's two-point-nine million dollars that we've had to spend to meet the immediate needs of the community. And i- am I right in understanding, and I'm sure we've covered this before when it comes to depreciation, it's, it's not something we can accurately forecast? I- is that correct?
The chief financial officer.
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. No, I wish there was a way to accurately forecast depreciation. Um, we are beholden because of the accounting standards, um, pretty much to the rates of CPI. So, but it is a little bit more complicated than that because we are actually, um, valuing assets at their replacement value. So, for instance, if a footpath is, to build a footpath has gone up by fifteen percent, then accordingly we'd have to increase all our footpaths by fifteen percent. That puts the depreciation up of those by fifteen percent.
Thank you. So, one last question. Um, we, we were lucky enough over the last few days to learn that we've, um, received sixteen-point-eight million dollars for Wallonby Road. Now, we know that that hasn't been brought into the books yet. We know that it has to come into the books. Um, we also know that there's no way that when that comes into the books, we're going to be able to expend all of that money within a twelve-month period. Can I get a, a general explanation of how that is going to affect our bottom line like this in the next couple of years, please?
Chief financial officer.
Uh, thank you. Um, you're coming out with a tricky question tonight. I appreciate that. The, the, um, the sixteen-point-eight billion dollars is, uh, is quite welcome. Because it is a capital grant, the income will be recognised as it is expended. So, um, in terms of the bottom line of the, of the council budget, it, it kind of nets itself off. If it was an operating grant, which is what the, the flood remediation, um, grants were, they are recognised as we receive them. And therefore, when the expenditure comes out in later years, that's, we don't get a matching principle and that is why you are ending up with operating losses. But in terms of the grant for this project, the expenditure, the income will match the expenditure, which is, um, welcome for us.
Okay, so I will, I will have one more question. Um, how, how then, um, given what you've just said, how then does, is, is there a, a, a percentage, or not necessarily a percentage, but is there a, a considerable amount of money that we get in as far as capital and operational grants that we have to roll over that will be a, a loss in the following year once we expend them?
CFO, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
CFO.
Uh, sorry, not so much in terms of capital grants, no. Uh, they, we are taking the principle that we can match the income with the expenditure. So, you would see within the supplementary documents to this report, a lot of the capital income that's been moved out is reflective of, um, grant-funded programmes that are being deferred because of resourcing constraints or others. So, that, that is kind of where capital income has fallen. Um, so accordingly, whenever we get capital grants, they match with expenditure. It doesn't really affect the bottom line.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, councillor Hill, you're going to go last in this one. Councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if I can ask a question as well, if I may. Uh, how much cash does council have in the bank at the moment?
The CFO.
Uh, between, um, uh, cash at bank and, uh, term deposits, I think it's somewhere around seventy-five million.
And is that public knowledge? As in, um, you, is, is all of the information, uh, in the agenda tonight, the, the amounts, your report, is that all available to the general public?
Uh, yes, yes, it is.
And one more, if I may. Uh, how many times in the last six years has this council run at a surplus?
Once, which was last year.
Thank, thank, thank you. Um, I guess it, councillor Olson asked about, or was mentioned that, you know, are we all happy about this? And no, it's not a, it's, it's certainly not, uh, something that you get overly excited about. Um, for me, it means that we've spent more money on the community than we've been able to recoup. And, and we're not a profitable business. Um, you know, we're not expecting to, um, take all of the rate payers' monies and, and pop it in, in the bank and just, uh, earn interest on it. There are services that we have to supply to the community on an ongoing basis, whether they pay their rates or not. I guess, um, I take some comfort in that, uh, talking to, um, the staff at the briefing, getting some factual information, uh, identifies areas that we can work on and it's something that this council can do. We have a deficit. Okay, that's, that's fine. Um, i- it's something that we need to address. Um, though, we need to go through a process to work out what's working, what's not. And as councillor Dunn's tricky questions, uh, thrown towards the staff, is that a significant part of this is made up of depreciation. And we are not the only organisation in Australia, uh, that has some challenges with depreciation. Happens in the public and private sectors. It's a challenge, uh, for accounts. Uh, we're also spending money, uh, on, uh, areas that have been affected by a natural disaster in this local government area. And unfortunately, we haven't been paid back by the state government and we may not be paid back. But their extra works that this council did not plan for, that money has to come somewhere, come from somewhere. Half of our budget is made up by rates. So, half of the money that we spend, only half of that comes from rates, which is a small portion really considering all of the things that we have to do. So, that is a challenge in itself because we are a huge area. We do offer a lot, a lot of services to our community through our libraries, through our amazing splash pad, thanks to councillor Fitzgibbon's continual support in the last term of council. We have got some of those things to enjoy in our local community and they come at a cost. So, sometimes in my own business, there are some times where I make a profit at the end of the day and sometimes I make a loss. And it's just about a re-evaluating on how we can push forward to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. Uh, and I think that, uh, if councillors want the full knowledge, want the facts about it, um, the briefings are certainly the way to go.
Thank you, councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it was, it was at the, if people come to the meetings, they would realise what really goes on because this was given by our money man and he explained it thoroughly, exactly what was going wrong. And, and when things get depreciated, obviously, that's where the money drops. And when we've got bridges that they got, got chalked down in price, obviously, that's where it all came from. And when you start looking at different other parts, that's why if you're on the meeting or you're involved in council, you should come to the meeting and you would know what the hell is going on instead of coming up here and trying to dictate your own imagination of how we're losing money. Thank you.
Councillor Olson, do you have questions?
I just got a question. If, um, that seventy-five million dollars cash, can we just put that, put that to roads, please? Can we?
Director.
Um, thank you. Um, the short answer is no, councillor Olson. Some of that money is assigned for other purposes such as unspent grant money and/or domestic waste and/or a range of other functions.
So, that seventy-five million dollars is really, uh, it's just to run the business and we can't actually put it anywhere else? If we take it anywhere else, we're in trouble.
I believe that was the answer.
Yeah, I think, thank you. That's all right. I just thought that to do it, telling people the proof.
You asked your question, councillor Olson. Um, councillor Hill in closing.
Thank you, Mesavell. Um, in closing, just two brief points. One of, um, to be polite initially before I close, can I put the question to councillor Olson? Is he able to, um, explain to, to us why he missed? All the answers given here by the finance manager tonight are almost identical to the, to the briefing that was given on Wednesday. And I understand that sometimes family or different things get in the way and you can't attend a briefing. Um, was there a significant reason you were unable to attend the briefing on Wednesday night? Last week on Wednesday?
Which meeting?
We had a briefing last Wednesday.
Yeah.
Which included that. Which included that, um, breakdown of information from the finance manager about the budget. Was there a significant reason you're unable to attend?
Yes.
Well, that's okay then. Cause I know that sometimes other councillors will often degrade you for not attending briefings. And there are often times, I know myself as well, that you can't attend a briefing. But to claim that you, that you may tomorrow go and, and put on Facebook the truth of the, of the financial situation of council, uh, without having heard that, that information from the finance minister.
I never, I never said, put on the truth. I said, I'll be putting on there what is in, the, the facts that's in here, the five million dollars. I never said the truth. The things that you don't want people to know, like.
Not, not a point of order, not a point of order. Councillor Hill has the floor.
I will move, I will move to finish the discussion of the matter. Um, Messavell, thank you all.
Okay, uh, we now put the, uh, motion, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Saval. Those against. Councillors Olson and Jurd. I'll declare it carried. Uh, CC four twenty twenty three, uh, notes from the Inquor at Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Committee meeting. Uh, moving that way, councillor Grine, seconded councillor Burke. Uh, speaking councillor Olson.
Yeah, Mayor, we, we can't be endorsing a committee notes because there was no, uh, it was inquiry meeting. Uh, we can't endorse minutes from that or anything from that because it, they can't make recommendations unless it's a full committee or a committee that's inquiry. And we are doing it again and again and again. And this is against our code of meeting practice and we should not be supporting this and it should be sent back, uh, unsupported.
Um, I, yeah, yeah. Well, I, I just note that we're, we're not, we're noting the minutes, um, but, yeah. Councillor, uh, councillor Dunn, sorry.
Oh, man, yep, Messavell. This, this just, it, it absolutely, I'm lost for words. You know, we're talking about inquiry meetings, yet, it's being spoken about by a councillor that didn't come to a meeting, that he is a councillor, he is a member of that committee. He didn't apologise, he just didn't turn up. And yet again, another meeting that a councillor doesn't turn up to. Yet we hear constantly about, we only have one meeting a month. And it's getting a bit tiresome, to be brutally honest. But in saying that, um, my understanding is this meeting was inquiry simply wasn't because, on this occasion, it was the community that never, um, presented on the evening. And these are notes, we are not accepting the minutes. Um, we are noting, the notes of the inquiry meeting. So we, that the notes of the inquiry meeting, be noted. We're not endorsing them. We are noting that it happened and this is what they spoke about. It's pretty straightforward, it's common English and everyone can read it. Um, we, we are not endorsing anything in this, other than to say, it was there, it was done, this is what they spoke about and we can read what they spoke about. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dunn. And I'll just note that, uh, if councillors weren't provided that information, I'm sure there would be questions asked about why, things are being hidden. Um, but, uh, so moving on with that resolution, I will, uh, put that, uh, to the vote. All those in favour? Uh, councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, and Saval. Those against. Councillors, uh, Watten, Olson and Jurd. I'll declare it carried. Um, moving to report CC six twenty twenty three, by annual complaints handling. Uh, moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Sander. Uh, no debate, put the motion. All those in favour? Uh, councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, and Jurd, uh, and Saval. Those against. Councillor Olson. I'll declare it carried. Uh, report CC nine twenty twenty three, uh, resolutions tracking. Moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. Uh, all those in, no debates. All those in favour? Uh, it's unanimous. Uh, moving on to report WI one twenty twenty three, Currie Currie nostalgia festival. Moving that way, councillor, Hill, seconded councillor Grine. Uh, speaking councillor Hill.
Thank you, Messavell. Um, I'd like to just speak briefly on, um, how pleased I am for this, uh, in kind support to be, to be offered to the Currie Currie nostalgia festival. It is, um, it is one of our town's largest, uh, events that we host and brings in such a large amount of people from outside the community. Um, it's something that I have myself have been attending since, you know, for the last ten plus years, when I was in high school. And, um, after the COVID period of, of quite a low, you know, not being able to hold the event as it had previously been done. Um, I'm aware that this, this nostalgia festival for this year is, is really winding up to be fantastic again, especially, with the additional works that this council has committed, that has, has completed in Currie Currie, including the upgrades to the Cole Brown Rotary Park, and the first stage completion of the CBD upgrades. The town is looking as good as it ever has. And I can't wait to have the festival go ahead there on the weekend in March.
Yeah, councillor Grine.
Yeah, why disturb my thunder Mitch? Um, yes, I, I totally a hundred percent agree. I just wanted to take this time to thank, our general manager and all the directors and all the council staff for the amazing job that they've done down there in Currie. It looks fantastic. I can't wait for stage two to begin. We get to show this town off again. First year back, nostalgia, bring it on. Thank you.
Uh, no further debate. We'll put the motion. All those in favour? It's unanimous. Uh, report WI two twenty twenty three, uh, public spaces legacy program, Bridges Hill Park, Tenochba shared pathway. Moving that way, councillor Dunn, seconded councillor Grine. Uh, speaking on that councillor Jurd.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I didn't think I'd get first, first up. Uh, this pathway from the start has been a complete mess. No use at all agree. Um, why do we rush these things? You know, we run out and get a grant with a timeframe that we can't work with because when we, do, we end up with, with this. This walkway is going to be crossing state roads, which mean heavily used roads. You're encouraging kids to ride or walk to school with a pathway that is crossing heavily, used roads. And yet, here we are, cro- cro- the crossing, no traffic lights. Um, I can't understand why traffic support, like traffic for New South Wales, is not supporting crossing at the BP at Allendale. So instead of crossing the BP up to, yeah, it says it in there, um, that they're not going to support that. They're gonna, they want the, um, everyone to be crossing at Fleming Street. This intersection already doesn't have the turning lanes that council received the money for and didn't do. And now they want to encourage kids to cross the road. That's on a seventy K road. Like, how can we fix this? Is there a way we can amend, amend this to make it?
Uh, councillor Jurd has the floor.
I know you want, uh, sorry, Mayor, to cut you off. I know you were really pushing for the traffic lights and stuff like that. Um, but when I've read this report, it's just really disheartening that we're not going to be able to get what you were, were hoping for, which was the best outcome, of the crossing up at the school, which was going to be a lot safer. So my question is, is this just what we have to do or can we, what can we do?
Now, the question, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to answer that. Um, I think, given the information, uh, from Transport for New South Wales and it is being a state road which they have authority over, um, they will determine where we can and can't cross. Uh, as you know, I, I've supported, uh, it staying on the western side, uh, and crossing over with hopefully a set of traffic lights at the corner of Lomas Lane. Uh, that is unlikely to be determined at any time soon, it appears. Uh, and therefore, the only way we have to meet the requirements of the, the grant, uh, by progressing, with this at the moment, so that we don't have to hand any money back. And, and handing any money back would actually mean not only, like, we'd have to give back money that we've actually already spent because this project has been, uh, um, undertaken for quite some time.
We all, we all realise that. So what, cause I, I couldn't see in the report. What is going to be there available? Is it just an island for people to cross there or?
Um, that's probably a question for the directors and.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for your question, councillor Jurd. Um, again, the traffic and transport team have been consulting with Transport for New South Wales and there'll be, uh, Transport for New South Wales approved safe crossing there. Um, I'm not sure of the exact details of that at the moment and once we have that documented, I'm, I'm sure we can share it.
Thank you.
Um, okay, no further.
Thanks, Mayor. Look, um, it's, it's case of we put the cart before the horse again, I think. We've, we've, we've come up with the design and I know we all said we didn't want to be crossing over anywhere along Wine Country Drive. But we've, we, we've rushed out, got a, got a, a grant of three point two million or something. And, um, we started this project and we had to spend the money. And I did ask the question of the, the then director, what happens if we don't, um, complete the project, um, in the timeframe? And he said he didn't know. I said, well, do we have to give the money back? And, and we haven't finished the project. And he said, I, I, he couldn't answer that question at the time. So here we are. And we've spent two million dollars or whatever on this so far. And, and we've, we're at a point where we don't even know where we're going. We don't know where we're crossing the roads. We've put it, put it down to Maitland Road, a hundred metres from a pedestrian crossing. And there's no crossing to get across. We don't know how we're going to cross that road. We've, we've, we've gone around backstreets and destroyed people's footpaths. And people didn't want it on their, their, they weren't even asked. They were just told, we're, we're coming through here. And I can tell you that people of North Sesnok are roteable about it. They're worried it's going to be a drug run and all this sort of stuff. And I, I can, I can understand where they're coming from with that. But here we go again, that we were rushed out and got this money. And we're going to have to put in over five hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of council money to finish the project. So something else has got to be deferred to be able to finish this project. Again, we're, we're not planning well enough. That is, that is one of the biggest problems as a council. They go out and estimate, guesstimate, I would say, rather than estimate. Because this happens a lot on when we go out and chase funding. We say it's going to cost X amount. It's like the cycle way between Gruden and Branksen. It's going round and round in circles. And people want to know when is it going to be finished? And we're certain tonight, we deferred it for another till next financial year. So when is it going to be finished? But here we see another thing, another thing that's supposed to be great for this community, but I don't think I'll see it being used by a lot of people. As, as the path runs around the old backstreets of Sesnok, I don't think it'll be used as much as we would want it to be used. But it's going to cost the community another five hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars minimum, if not more. And then we just said we had a deficit of five million. Here we go, another fi- half a mil. We proved to buy land. Which was gonna, I don't know how much this is going to cost. We've got a, another major, an idiot night, we're confidential session where we might have to buy more land. And that's going to cost us more money. So, as, as everyone mocked me for what I said about the finances, you've got to be careful. We've got to be careful. We've got to think about what we're doing. We've got to think about chasing money like this. This pathway is going to be hell. And it's going to cause us problems and problems for the kids get travelling, that do use it to travel to school. I don't think the parents will be game enough to let their kids ride a push bike or wa- walk along there to cross that road a couple of times. And I, I really do have concerns about it. And I, I wish we had a plan that was approved plan. And it's like I say about Currie Street, we've got an approved plan, approved by the councillors and we can stick to it and fight for it to get it right. So the community is safe when they're out there, walking, riding or crossing our roads. Because the way this is, this has been just a, a mixed batch of do this here, do that there. Damage, damaging Henderson Street when they done the road there and haven't fixed it. That there's so much things and running up a, a pathway to a telegraph pole and then stop and then we've got to build a bridge, we've got, are we going to move the telegraph pole? We just keep adding costs, adding costs. Nothing was planned. It was just a guesstimation, we're going to run a path across there. This will be fantastic. But here we are. And that, because we're doing that sort of work, we're, we're focusing on that, other roadworks are getting deferred further back. And that's, and then we're going to have that problem after, in July, when we get these sixteen million dollars off the state government to do Wallonby Road. And that, now that's going to be another concern because I know I've already had people ring me something. We don't want dual lanes down Wallonby Road. So it, it just goes on and on and on and how this, how we, how our staff are, are running this, running this council and how they communicate, to us as councillors and how we can put the message back out to the people. I can't ring, I can't ring a staff member here. I get, no one answers my phone calls. I put an email in, I get told I'm doing it wrong. I, I can't even, I can't even get a response from a, from a staff member. Be- because, because I don't sit on the right side of the table, I believe. And that's a problem. And that's a real problem. That's a, a real problem because we are all councillors and we're entitled, we're all entitled to the same information. And yes, I might come to your briefing sessions, but I might feel like I'm scared and bullied because I get bullied enough here. And it just goes on and on and on. And I'm disappointed. I'm very disappointed.
Uh, I, I feel I just need to make a comment in regard to some of the recent attacks that have just been put towards staff. Um, I think it's quite inappropriate, um, to, to stack, attack staff in a public forum like this. And I do want to remind, um, councillors that, grants, when they're put in for, uh, periods like this, are, are put in in advance of when projects are due to be delivered. And we've seen, uh, pretty well unprecedented in recent times, uh, in excess of twenty percent inflation in construction projects, um, for, for costs. We also to say that there's no plan. Um, when the, the works were submitted, there was a design by council staff. And, um, to remind councillors, it was us councillors that intervened in that, and said, we would like it a different way and stopped work on part of that. So it was a plan. We tried to change the plan. Uh, and it's come back and said, we've tried to do what you want, but we cannot do that under the grant requirements, and getting approvals from Transport for New South Wales that own the road. So we only have the option to go with what was originally put forward. Uh, and I think the, the works, uh, acting director of works and the general manager have been pretty open about, that at briefings where we have discussed this and, and at any conversations that I've had with them about the project. So, um, I, I think we should refrain from, from making the comments like that again in the future. I, I think there were, were more than one councillor Olson. There were a number and I would suggest that you. Uh, yeah, I, I, there, there were, were many, um, councillor, councillor Olson, just. Yeah, I have the floor, um, and councillor. Um, councillor Moors has the floor.
Sorry, I was just, I'm just amused how you can say, I'm sorry, and then blink and wink and say, yeah, that got it. Okay, councillor Olson, you're saying, you, you, you're turning around saying that, uh, you know, you, you're asked the directors and you're asked the manager and you ask this person, ask that person and they don't give you a reply. I felt the same way when I got the same email that you got from Miss Elizabeth Bell, who said at the tail end of the letter, I would appreciate your help as much as you can give me, as councillor Olson has made it clear to me, he's unable to assist me. So when you reject a person out there that's asking you for help, you can see where, I can understand how it does hurt. The same way it hurts for this lady.
Make it clear what, what the complaint was about and a complaint that I can't help with, because the house is overgrown with grass and trees and bushes. And the council's asked her to clean it up.
I, I think, uh, I think we've strayed, we've strayed from the, uh, the motion. So I'll draw us all back to, the motion. Uh, we'll put, put the motion. Uh, all those in favour? Uh, councillors Jackson, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Saval. Those against. Councillors Painter, uh, Watten, Olson and Jurd. Uh, I'll declare it carried. Uh, report BN one twenty twenty three, councillor Olson.
Ah, hang on, where are we? Ah, right, yeah. Um, well, a- after, not all of us can make it to, uh, I'll move the motion. The council will be provided with access to attend briefings via audio visual links such as Zoom. I put that motion up.
Councillor Jurd.
I put that motion up because, uh, not all of us are, are lucky enough to have babysitters, et cetera, et cetera. Or have different reasons why they can't get down here. And if you think about, um, climate change, with less driving, we do, the better it is. Um, so, uh, if we can use the Zoom, it'd be fantastic so that at least we can attend. Because we're allowed to attend, uh, the general manager's review via Zoom. We're allowed to attend, uh, committee meetings via Zoom, but we can't attend a briefing via Zoom. We're allowed to attend, uh, committee meetings via Zoom, but we can't attend a briefing via Zoom. And I, I have, I, like, I'm, I'm actually shocked at how much information's been put in here by, by our staff. I've never seen that happen before in the twenty four years I've been at council. I've never seen a director's commentary on any notice of motion. But here it is on all of mine tonight. And it's, it's a shock to get that sort of information because I think that we, I would rather see councillors being able to attend a briefing session via Zoom than not even attend. And maybe you might find that, you might see me there more because, as I said earlier, maybe I feel like I'm getting bullied when I turn, turn up to these meetings and I don't want to come. So I stay away and only come to the ones that are important where you get to vote in open council and prove yourself. And so the residents should see what you're voting for. So I have no reason why we shouldn't be having been allowed to attend briefings via audio. And if the council does want to support it, they will. But I, I'll, I'll be very disappointed if we don't and still allow councillors to attend committee meetings via Zoom.
Uh, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Miss Savell. Um, I'm generally in support of councillor Alson's, um, notice of motion here at this time. And reading through the report, I've noticed at the bottom of these considerations from the, um, director's staff, that there is an alternative motion being presented. Could I just query which the director responsible for the, for the information as to why that alternative was put forward?
The director of corporate community services.
Um, thank you, um, Miss Savell. Councillor Hill, the information provided in the report in response to the notice of motion was to provide in full information for all councillors so they can make an informed decision. Um, as the report, um, commentary points out, the ability to provide, um, attendance via audio visual means already exists within general, general managers' delegations. And the proposal as it stands from councillor Alson could be seen to be a met, seeking to amend the code of meeting practice, which would require it to be publicly, publicly exhibited, um, over a period of time. So the alternate motion is recommend or put forward for councillors' consideration. That would allow a process to occur, um, as, as been sought by councillor Alson without requiring the change to the code of meeting practice.
Would it be your understanding that if the alternative motion were to be, um, recommended and, and resolved, that, that that would be in effect as of the next briefing? Or do you, do you not understand what the timeframe of implantation would be?
The director.
Uh, that would be subject to the direction of the general manager, but I would envisage that, um, if it's adopted and the ability is there, um, that could be put in place with the appropriate, um, restrictions or limitations on attendance. So obviously you, you want your councillors here in person, um, same as council meetings and the like, so. But I would envisage that that could occur at the next briefing.
Excellent. If, if I am able, then I would like to propose that the alternate, um, recommendation as written in the report, um, be amended to the current existing resolution.
Yeah, to, um. Yeah. Yep. Yeah, a question councillor Alson.
Just, just a question, it says pre-meeting briefings. We're talking about every briefing on a Wednesday night. Is it, is that what we mean by pre-meeting, not the one, if we have the one before council meeting on a night?
Um, those, those things are discussed at briefings, um, as well because that's what briefings are about. They're about reports that are coming up to council. Um, so I think that, look, we've got to move with the times, we definitely do. Um, though one thing that, um, I would like to have thought about is if somebody is joining via Zoom, that their camera is turned on. Because in my past dealings, uh, in other organisations, um, you know, it's quite easy to turn your phone on, join the meeting, turn off your camera. And go back to doing what you're doing. It would be good to know that the councillor is present. Um, and the only way to do that is if their image is, um, shown for the entire duration of the briefing.
Thank you councillor Burke, and I believe something similar to that is a requirement in the code of meeting practice for, um, for council meetings and committees. Um, councillor Jurd.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, I just want to say this would be amazing if everyone supported this. I can't always get here. I don't actually like letting other people babysit my child. Sometimes my husband has to work, et cetera. It is only compulsory to come to this meeting, so I know that I'm guaranteed to have a, a babysitter for this. And I haven't missed a meeting yet, even when I had a family member pass away. So the sometimes I can't get to the briefing, I'd like to have the information. So I would like everyone to support this so that I can still know what's happening. Thank you.
Councillor Moors.
Thank you, ma'am. I know everyone's got different circumstances, but what I, what I can see here is that we're going to end up where everyone stays home and no one comes here. Cause we'll all turn on our phones and we'll just stay home. And I think you, you've got, you're better when you're here because you, you're tossing things around and, and you get into the, the core of what we're trying to do. That's why I think it's better off having them, having the, uh, talks. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, um, so no further debate, the, the, um, proposals, uh, before us. I'll put the, um, resolution as it stands. All those in favour? Uh, it's, um, is councillor, is councillor Jackson, uh, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten. Uh, Alson and Jurd and Savell, those against councillor Moors. Um, I'll declare it carried. Uh, moving on to, uh, report BN two twenty twenty three, uh, councillor Alson.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, my motion is that councils be provided with written answers to all requests as permitted, even if they are operational. The, the reason I'm asking, asking for this is.
Is there a seconded for that?
Yeah.
Uh, councillor Painter.
The reason I'm asking for this is we as councillors often get people ringing us and, and asking about different issues. And they said they've been to council and they can't work it out, can you help us and all that sort of stuff? So we, we put in a C A I and asked for a thing, a request to have investigated. But we never know if it gets resolved because we don't get a response and the answers are, it's confidential, blah, blah, blah. All these different things they put up to us. But all the time I've been on council and I've asked for something, I've always got the answer as well as the resident. And it needs to be in writing because I got censured over a phone call with a staff member. Um, because it was written, it was a phone call and I asked him to put it in writing.
Councillor Alson, I, I don't know that you should be referring into.
Sorry, I retract that. Sorry, it was confidential. But I, I, I asked a council staff member who rang me about an issue and gave me an answer. And I asked him to put it in writing and he declined, he said he doesn't have to. Now, if it's in writing, it can't be contested, it can't be argued about, but you can challenge it by what you've got written in front of you. Residents, some residents only get phone calls as well. They need, they, and, and some of the elderly get confused with the answers. So they get themselves mixed up. So if we don't get an answer for them and then three months down the track, they ring up and say, you've never done, you've never done nothing. Well, I said, well, I don't know because I don't get an answer. And I need to know that answer, uh, what council's going to do to help that resident or not do anything to help the resident. Perfect example, I, I, it was, it's the awning down at Roway Hotel, a rural hotel, it hasn't been approved. I don't know if it has now, but it has never been approved. And that, that was, I mean, Gareth Curtis was here and he argued with the owner for three years about it. So I let Mr Nicholson know about it when he started and he, I never got an answer. Eighteen months later, I asked him what's going on and he said, oh, it's closed and no one's, no one's done nothing about it. And we don't tell you because it's operational. Well, hang on, it's open, been open twelve months and it's still not approved. So that awning falls down on someone, who's in trouble? The council knows about it, we've done nothing. And we don't, as a councillor, don't know that, that there's been a resolution or anything done. I didn't know it was been approved or not. But if I didn't ask the question, I wouldn't have got told that. But I got told it's operational. I don't, I don't care if it's operational or not. What does it hurt if you're going to, to send us an email saying we've resolved the issue, it's been approved, blah, 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 whatever? We need to know when we ask the question, we need to know it's been resolved, then we can talk to the resident and say, did you get the answer? Are you happy? What can I do to help you? That's what it's all about. We are voted by these people to represent these people and if we don't get answers, how can we represent them? We might as well not be here. I know the staff want us to, to direct them all into the council, but I'm, I've been helping a bloke in Hall Street, it's ninety five year old, doesn't own a computer. So how does he get the, how does he do it? He's struggling to walk. Uh, please, I, I'm, we're, we're elected to do a job, allow us to do the job. Do, give us an answer. If you're not going to do anything about it, that's fine. We just need that answer. I don't, I'm not saying we want you to approve everything we put in for, every request we put in. I just want that answer, the same answer you give to the person that I'm asking the question for. So then I can take, if I can help them anyway, I will. If I can't, I can talk to them about why I can't do anything anymore. Okay? So that's why I put this motion up. I just think it's just about allowing councillors to be a representative of the people who voted us in.
Councillor Jurd.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, if the staff could see us, see, see us in a response would be amazing. This way I know councillors contacted and also what they, councillor has contacted the resident and also what they've said. I know whispers can happen in time. Um, it happened with me with work recently where a client come in and said something different to what actually happened. And it caused a massive trouble. So what I would, what I'm saying is if we actually know what council said, we can back council up when they, when the resident says they, the council has told us da, 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 da. And it might not be actually what council's told them. So it just would be really nice if we could do this. That way I can support council, so council's supporting me and that way I can learn to do this job better. Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Miss Mayor. If I just ask a quick question, um, general manager or the director of corporate and community services? Just in regards to, um, confidentiality, privacy, legalities, those types of things, where do we stand as councillors and, and council as a whole, um, in that?
Director.
Um, thank you, Miss Savell. That's the ninety four dollar question, um, in relation to privacy and the like. It is a minefield in relation to what we can and can't provide to councillors in their role. Um, as elected members, um, you're not necessarily there to advocate individually for residents and ratepayers. And I know in practice that does occur. Um, in relation to privacy, the rules and restrictions on what we can provide to councillors is fairly, um, broad. And we're not able to, without direct authority from a resident that says, I, Bill Smith, authorised councillor Anthony Burke to represent me on this matter. We can't provide you with some of that information. So, um, I know the, the, the comment earlier in a bit, piece about as simple as CC you in the response. And I know historically over time that has been provided. Uh, but with the increase in the privacy laws and the impact on our organisation, um, we cannot take that risk in providing that information. Because we could inadvertently be breaching a resident's privacy. Um, I think there are ways that we can close the loop with councillors, um, in relation to saying, yes, we have this matter and it has been finalised. But as, as far as giving you an answer and a full detailed response on every single item you put in. Um, from an operational perspective and a privacy perspective, they really are just not able to be done, which is unfortunate.
Thank you, and I, I appreciate it because I know that, you know, privacy is, is a huge thing now and it is a, a minefield. And I'd certainly hate to put myself in any, uh, position to be open to that. Um, I guess I have a standard practice with, um, residents, I, I just, I'm upfront with them. I just say, um, I, I will put it in for you. Um, I encourage them to do it themselves as well. And I just say that I will not get a response. Um, and if, if, uh, their answer doesn't come through within a two week period to come back to me and we'll, we'll chase it up again. So I guess I just, you know, and I've never had an issue, um, uh, doing that. Something that I, um, forgot to mention, um, in, in the la, in councillor Alson's last, uh, notice of motion. Uh, there was mentioned about the director's commentary. Um, I think that's a great thing, um, because notice of motion is just, they come from us, it's not from staff. Um, so if that's one of the directors or coming from the, the new general manager, um, it's certainly appreciated and, and thank you for that information.
Yeah, councillor Watten.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I think my question was actually answered through that with regards to privacy. It would be great for accessibility and advocacy and efficiency. But with privacy, yeah, it's a really contentious grey matter. So I do understand that. Um, regardless, I, I will support this motion because, uh, you know, we all represent the community, all different shapes, sizes, ages, demographics. And dealing with the elderly that just struggle with information, I'm, I'm passionate about advocacy. So I, I would be supporting this in saying that I do understand the privacy issue. It's a very big conundrum, uh, wish it was easier. I thought a consent might have worked, but it, it won't. But yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, um, also noting for around the privacy stuff councillor Watten, there's, um, requirements as well around information provided by staff. Um, that some of it has to be provided to a councillor, has to be provided to all councillors, uh, which potentially creates a further problem in, you may have, um, consent for yourself. But you might not have consent for the other twelve of us.
Yep.
So, um, councillor Sander.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, certainly, um, it is a bit of a conundrum. Um, the Privacy Act is a major issue. But not only that, the, um, timeframe and the logistics on staff in regard to this, um, is another issue. I've got a question to the co, director of corporate. What would be the estimated timeframe that would include to in, to include all our councillors in some of these correspondence?
Director.
Um, from memory, um, a few years back when we costed it out timelines in responding to councillor requests, it was something like three and a half months worth of staff time in, in any one year. Um, it is a, a big time commitment in researching some of these issues. Um, you get those questions around queue jumping and all that like. Um, but outside of that, I couldn't really put a, a timeframe on it, other than the fact that it is, um, it's a big impost on staff time. Particularly when there are so many options for our members of our public to, A, contact us, phone, email, whatever. Um, and there are options in relation to non-response, um, if, if a resident is not happy with, with an answer. Um, having said all that, um, in relation to a response provided to a resident, there is nothing stopping that resident.
Is that when you have been talking to someone and then you write an email in, is that when you have been talking to someone and then you write an email in to go, hey, ba, 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 ba. Uh, they ring you back and go, how did you go? You just feel stupid when you say, well, I, I don't know, I never had an answer yet. You know what I mean? So as, as a, as a councillor, I mean, you're out there, as, as councillor also said, to represent the person or, or the people. But the point is that you're just in no man's land. And I know the Privacy Act does, does come into it. But, you know, I'm still waiting on a reply about an incident at Nookaba. I haven't even been approached. Even though I was approached by the, one of the directors and says, this is about your email, rah, rah, rah. At least you've got some feedback. But when you've got none, you, why be in the job? You know, that's why they look at you with a blank face and go, well, if you can't fix it, how the hell can I fix it? Thank you.
Uh, in closing councillor Alson.
Yeah, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Look, three and a half months timeframe for responding to all councillors for requests we put in, we must put a lot of requests in. And then if we didn't put them in, then the general public must, will be putting them in. So you'd still have to do, put a response out there anyway. I think that it's not hard for, for when the response goes to the, to the, the person we're representing. It's not hard to let the councillor know, we have responded to the councillor in writing, to the person that's complained in writing. If you want to know how it went, speak to them. Just so we know it's been finalised. Because if we don't know it's finalised, in two weeks' time, we haven't got an email. If we don't know it's finalised, like councillor Moore just said, if we don't know, how do we, how do we represent the people? And they, they think that we're here to represent them and I believe I'm here to represent them and that's what I've always tried to do. And if I'm not getting an answer, if I don't get an answer off anyone, then I don't know if, if anything's been resolved or anything's been fixed. Um, like months down the track, I'm getting phone calls off people saying, oh, we got told this, we got told that on the phone. Now, that's not a good way to respond to people. It needs to be in writing because I've had that issue and I've spoken to it, to, to staff about it. And that didn't work because the gentleman had a different understanding of what the staff. And that didn't work because the gentleman had a different understanding of what the staff told him. And the staff had a different understanding of what she told them. So who's right, who's wrong wasn't in writing. So we need everything in writing and that way we have to put our requests in writing. We have to put it in an email and we have to put it in writing. If we've got to do it in writing, why can't the staff who has to deal with it just say councillor Olson or whoever puts the request in, we have dealt with Jim Smith's issue and we have responded to him. If you want to know what the result is, speak to Jim. Simple as that. And that's all I need to know is done. Then I can go and say he's written response or I'll ring him and we can work it out. It's a simple process and I don't think it's going to be that hard to have a standard email to send out to people saying that issue's been resolved that you requested. It doesn't have to go to every councillor because we put the request in for a person that rings us because they want something done. I think it's simple. I think that's what the people out there think. We're politicians. The people sitting in here think they're politicians. And I want to be politicians and all that so forth. So we all want, we all are pretending to be politicians in here. But if we're not going to be allowed to represent the people, well, then we're not a politician. We're just sitting on the board as a director. And once we sign off on the budget, we can go home and that's it for twelve months. So I like to be able to say that I, I, and I know a lot of councillors work damn hard to represent the community. And I know that they put the effort in to be out there and be known, that they'll help anyone that needs help. And I just think that we need to get an answer. And I think that's the only way, the only way we as councillors can do our job properly.
No further debate. I'll put the motion. All those in favour? Councillors Moore's, Painter, Watten, Olsen, Judd. Those against councillors Jackson, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval. Declare it lost. Moving on to report BN three twenty twenty three, we call councillor Olson.
Yeah, yeah, I'll change that motion I've got there to the alternative with a little bit of extra on there. That one council direct the general manager to communicate with the family by formal letter to make an application in accordance with the policy to customer inquiries. And if not supported, two, consider the idea of a memorial plaque. I don't, I'm not all that worried about. It's not, the family aunt rang me and said, look, our family member passed away in the creek there and can we get a bridge named after him?
Sorry, we're just working on the motion, but yeah, seconded councillor Judd.
Yeah, I'll wait till she types it all up.
And can I suggest rather than adding another point, make an application? I haven't got the wording in front of me because I passed it on. But we work it into the same point that the general manager provides the information to the community about how they would do either of those things.
Yeah, yeah. And the second point was that if it's not supported as a making it a memorial bridge, that they could put at least a plaque on there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so I think the alternative, so if we could just change direct probably to request is the way we usually communicate with the family to make an application in accordance with policy to customer inquiries for, and if we continue on to the end, for place naming or plaque placement.
Or memorial plaque, yeah.
Place, yeah, for place naming or memorial placement.
Yep, yeah. Look, I personally do not know the person or knew the person and I don't know the family. But they asked if I could bring this to council. And that's, in my original motion was to consider naming it. And that's all I wanted, I wanted to bring it to council so that the councillors had the decision. There might be reasons that councillors don't want to support it. I don't know, but I just think that it gives the person the opportunity to put it into council as a request. And if council can't support it, maybe give you an option of a memorial plaque there so that they can remember their family member. And I'll leave it up for council to debate it or vote on it. Thanks.
Um, speaking councillor Burke.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I just have a question around what councillor Olson has asked in regards to if it doesn't fit the criteria, then the possibility of a memorial plaque. Would that come, would a memorial plaque come back to this council for a decision? Or will, because in the process, the process doesn't allow for a memorial plaque because the naming is, you know, name a bridge, name a park, name an asset, where a placing of the plaque is different. So would that come back to council?
I think the intent of the motion is to advise the residents on the policies relating to these, whether that is a policy relating to the naming of something or the policy of what we have in regards to placing of any plaques. I'm not sure what that policy is myself. But any resident would be able to contact council any way to get this information. I think this is just asking-
Getting to go through that proper process so we can assess.
Them to go through the process and just have someone in council contact them to let them know the process.
Yeah, sure.
Councillor Painter.
Yeah, while I'm sympathetic towards the family and their loss of the family member, I would have thought that memorial bridges, you know, parks, whatever, would have been designated to those who've done significant things in the community over an extended period of time. So I'm just not sure that, like a memorial. Of course, we have on corners where people have lost their lives in car crashes and the like. And not that I want to discount this person's life. I'm just not sure that naming infrastructure of somebody who hasn't done things significant over an extended period of time is appropriate. And that's just my comment.
Yeah, and I'm sure the policy will actually reflect that information. Councillor Hill.
In, following on from that, from the likelihood from our discussion that it's unlikely the policy would enable the place naming. Does the wording in this resolution as it stands give our, you know, are we supporting that a memorial will be placed in this location if that is the alternative? Or are we supporting that council will fund and supply that plaque? Or will that, are we simply giving them permission to place that memorial there?
My, I think we're not endorsing anything or funding anything. This is council just providing the resident that councillor Olson has been contacted by the information on what they would need to apply for or how they could go about applying anything. And that would be, any decisions would then be made in accordance with those relevant policies.
Excellent. Thank you.
Councillor Sander.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. In regard to naming of facilities, et cetera, our infrastructure, question to the director of corporate. That would have to go to the geographic names board. Would that be correct?
The director.
Thank you, councillor. I believe it does councillor Sander, but again, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that policy states in the process, but certainly we can let the councillors know what that might look like.
Yeah, and if, just in answer to that, it is on page one hundred and sixty nine of the agenda, it refers to clause four point two. That it, yeah, it's got to meet the geographic name board policy.
There you go. There's your answer.
Um, the councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I don't mean to trivialise Chad's memory here, it's actually my year at school. But I just, I wonder, were these alternatives communicated to councillor Olson when he put this notice of motion in? I just think there might have been a more appropriate way of advising the family on how to discreetly make applications for something like this rather than do it publicly and sort of get it wrong, as it were. I'm just, would it maybe have been more appropriate to inquire rather than move a notice of motion, just to save any re-
That was a question to councillor Olson.
Look, I put, every time I put a notice of motion in, I have been contacted when they're not worded correctly to reword them or told what to do with them. On this, these three, no one told me to do anything else about these three. Just that I asked the general manager if they'd been approved and they took a period of time to be approved. No one said to me, you can't do that then. Or councillor Olson, no one told me you can't do that. So I put it in. I didn't know I was doing, if I'm doing the wrong thing, I didn't know. Because I've never done anything like this before.
Yeah, yeah. Look, I'm not saying it's the wrong thing. I'm just saying maybe there was a more appropriate way of going around something so sensitive. But look, I'm happy to support the alternative. Yeah.
Yep. Okay, councillor Moore's.
Thank you, Mayor. All I could say to this is that the naming of anything, as you know, as has the director of infrastructure, if he's read through his particulars. I am now in the seventh month of writing seventeen emails, one a life story on a person. And this is to name the BMX track at Bellbird after Neville Tomlinson. And I've had to go to his family, and Goosey's now talking about it. But I had to go to his family and sit down with them. And the questions of when he was born, when did he die? How long did he live in Bellbird? All the questions are just huge. And this is to name something after somebody. It has to go to Sydney and it has to, it's all the, so there is a procedure. But Ian, I can tell you, it's a long procedure, very long. I've been trying now, say seven months, and it's still going on. Okay, and I've still got, the next project I want to do is name the new estates after, in Bellbird, after the miners that have been killed in the Bellbird pits. The streets instead are just Fisher Street. Who the hell is Fisher Street? You know, something that makes something of Bellbird so it becomes a reality that there was a mine there. So to name it after anybody, it is very hard. But, you know, I say, push on, just go for it. But, you know, it is a long, long process.
Okay, no further debates. We'll put the resolution which stands now as the alternative, not the one on top. So I'm putting that resolution, all those in favour. Uh, it's councillors Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Watten, Olsen, Judd and Saval. Those against councillors Jackson. I'll declare it carried. Now moving on to report CO one twenty twenty three. Moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Grine. Speaking on that councillor Olson and I'll just, before we start a discussion on this matter, I will just advise all councillors that the content of the correspondence referred to is confidential and cannot be discussed in an open council meeting. And therefore, if any councillors wish to discuss the contents of the letter, we would need to have a procedural motion to remove this item to be considered as part of the confidential meeting.
Thanks for clarifying that for us, Mayor. I am not going to talk about what's in the letter. I'm just going to say that this is what you get back after spending approximately seventy thousand dollars to censure me. And it doesn't tell the general public a thing about what I've done wrong. But that's good value, seventy thousand dollars.
Uh, we'll now put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Councillor Reports. No, well, we'll move a procedural motion. Move into the confidential session, move councillor Burke, seconded councillor Grine. All those in favour, it's unanimous. Now close the-